My name is Julie Pierce. I am the mayor of the city of Clayton and I want to welcome you to the city council meeting for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. We are gathered here today via Zoom technology due to the COVID-19 pandemic and so we will be meeting via Zoom. We will be taking public comment on items on the agenda. We will also at a certain point be taking public comment on items not on the agenda. At that time, we will also be getting public comment from each of our candidates who are running for Clayton City Council. I will give you a upfront warning that in the event of a rotating power failure, any unfinished items will be carried over to our meeting on September 3rd. So we'll just stop wherever we are when the power goes out and everything will automatically be reposted on our meeting for September 3rd. I don't think we're going to have a power failure because most of Clayton is in what they call rotating block number 50 and that's not shown on the schedule for tonight. However, it's been a little uncertain lately. So if that happens, you know what we'll be doing. Don't have to come back and try to get in later. We'll just automatically move to the next meeting. So let me ask Janet to please call the roll because with COVID, we require that for remote meetings.
Thank you, Mayor Pierce. Councilmember Catalano.
Present.
Councilmember Diaz.
Present.
Councilmember Wolf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Here.
And Mayor Perry. Here. Thank you.
Next, may I ask, and I will ask everyone to remain silent for this while I ask Councilmember Diaz to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of stomachs in that.
Yeah. So, and the reason we all remain quiet is because otherwise it would just be a jumble. So we are appropriately attentive. So the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar and I understand there may be items that council members wish to pull. Would you please let me know if that is the case?
Yeah, I'd like to pull, I think it's item D.
Okay, just item B, which is the North Valley Park.
Oh wait, sorry. It was C.
The HDL, the HDL study, but not North Valley Park.
Yeah, I think I spoke with Fran earlier and I think that one's good.
Okay, very good. Then let's go ahead to item C for a separate discussion. And Jeff, would you like to ask your question?
Sure. So it looks like this is like a fee recovery type item where we're going to pay something like just north of $3,000 plus a contingency for anything recovered. Do we have, does this company have experience and history of recoveries? And if so, was that available to us? Because I'm wondering if it's worth the $3,000 fee plus contingency, what the break even is on how much we would have to recover and the likelihood of doing that. 3,800 plus 15% of a finder fee.
Right. So Fran, do you want to address that first or do you want to have Paul do that?
Paul, why don't you give it a shot and I'll come in behind you.
Paul, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Good evening, humble mayor, members of the council. First, HDL is pretty much the preeminent sales and property tax consultants in California with regards to sales tax. It's not just the recovery service. They also provide projections for budget and other forecasting. For me, I thought this is a particular use given that one of the items that the council has deemed to be of high importance is for staff to come up with a multi-year projection of revenue forecasts and expenditures for the next five years. So staff's working on that regardless of whether you allow this to go or not. This would be a good tool for us to put in our quiver. But to answer Vice Mayor Juan's question, I can only go by what I have with my experience in the past. We used HDL in both Fortuna and Eureka. In my experience, they come and they meet with you quarterly and they go or provide projections and reports to give to the council as well as some other reports that are just for staff. But HDL paid for itself the first quarter that they were, we were working in Fortuna and that in one of the quarterly meetings, we came up and we're going over our top sales tax providers. And so what about the XYZ Corp? They moved in from, they moved over down to Fortuna from Eureka and that wouldn't have popped up on its own. It would have just been, we would have never known about this. But this company, which is a large company for Fortuna, would be the same for Clayton. They were still being reported, their revenues were still being reported to the state as a Eureka sales tax provider. And gosh, we recovered about $30,000 that first year just from that. Another item that they, and particularly with in light of the Wayfair decision and, you know, burgeoning online sales, it's very easy for sales taxes to be, and not intentionally certainly, but for sales tax revenues to be misidentified to different, to the wrong jurisdiction, be it that maybe they just go into the county pool or that somehow they get misallocated to Concord or another city in our area. They have a lot of analytical software that allows them to ensure that the city of Clayton is getting what is due to them. I don't know if you wanted to jump in on that, City Manager Rob Astelli?
So can I follow up with that? So is the, this is an annual, is this an annual agreement? It seems like. Is there an auto renewal on that?
It's an annual agreement. We can discontinue it with, I think, a 30-day notice.
Yeah, I think we can discontinue the 30 days, but if we don't, does it renew automatically at the end? I was trying to find that. I think usually these types of agreements do.
Yes, it would automatically renew if one party has to move with that notice of cancellation within 30 days.
Okay. Okay. And are we aware if our neighboring cities are also using the same company?
You know that Concord uses them.
I also know Walnut Creek uses them. So they're pretty well utilized throughout the state. I think they have, Paul, was it over 250 cities are in contract with them?
Over 350 out of 500 cities.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And so they would, they provide also like, like you said, updated consulting services regarding future projections as well as the look up of the sales and use tax jurisdictional search?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions on this item? If not, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Juan, a second by Catalano. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Mayor Pierce. Councilmember Catalano?
Hi.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Hi.
Mayor Perry? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. The next item on our agenda is a recognition and a presentation and I won't lead the entire proclamation, but just suffice it to say, we are issuing a proclamation in recognition of National Women's Suffrage Day, which takes place on August 26th of this year in commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the passage of the Women's Suffrage Right to Vote Act. And so we have issued a proclamation at the request of our Clayton Women's Club and we will be sending that on over to them. You have all of that in your agenda packet.
Julie.
Next item this evening, yes.
Julie, can I just quickly thank you for, and thank for the Women's Club for bringing this forth. I think it's, I personally had not realized that it's been 100 years, but I do think it's very important to recognize these and remind us all, especially the next generation of girls, so that they can sort of see it and believe it. And as you know, I was born in a country that achieved universal suffrage as the second country in the world. So I think it's very, very important for everyone to be reminded of these things. So thank you for bringing it forth.
And I would follow up, just a comment. I was reading some information this afternoon and it reminded me that while the right to vote was passed for white women in 1920, it was not passed for all women until the middle of the 1900s of the last century. So it's been in the last 50 years that we finally achieved the right to vote for all women in the United States. So this was what kicked it off, what got it started, and now we are finally where we should have been a long time ago. So anyway, we will be sending that over to the Women's Club. The next item on the agenda is reports. We did not have a meeting of the Planning Commission nor of the Trails and Landscape Committee. Fran, would you like to give us the city manager and staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, city council members and all of our audience today watching this council meeting. Few updates. One is we've had some inquiries about the continued closure of the restrooms in the two city parks and we have continued to keep those closed for a few reasons. One is safety is our first priority right now and the resources of the city are not positioned to keep those restrooms clean at the level that the county health orders requiring. And we also have been hearing concerns from the community regarding participants in the parks actually conforming to the distance requirements and the facial masks. So we just wanted to take this time to pass on some extra encouragement to continue to really practice social distancing, wear your masks, and please do not participate in large gatherings as we try to get through this pandemic and keep us all safe. Also wanted to give you just a brief update that Sunday evening, I'm sure many of you are aware that we had some evacuations in the unincorporated area of Clayton. We had approximately, we think about 100 households impacted by that evacuation. 30 households actually ended up coming to our center that we coordinated with Cal Fire at Hoyer Hall to open up the facility to the Red Cross, who was stationed there for approximately seven hours and was able to place 15 homes in hotels in the local area where families did not have places to go stay with other friends or family in the area. This fire was originally called the Deer Complex Fire and if you're following it now on the Cal Fire website, it has been now packaged with what they're calling the Lightning Complex, which has fires in five active counties in Northern California right now. And that's not including Napa County that's having their own issues at the moment. So I just wanted to take one second to special thanks to Sergeant Anau and Laura Hoffman, who were the staff that responded to this incident and were very helpful in helping out Cal Fire to make this happen. So that, really appreciate it. And then last, you all are experiencing the heat. PG&E is putting out notices of rotating outages due to the extreme heat and this is a power grid issue. This is not a public safety power shut-off that some of you have been accustomed to due to high winds or weather conditions related to power line safety. And so I just wanted to give some quick reminders that if you can do your part, set your thermostat to 78 degrees between 3:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., if it's safe for you to do so. And then trying to limit your use of large appliances during that same timeframe will help the grid management right now that PG&E is working with the state on. So that's it on my announcements. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We will then go to announcements by city council members. This is a time when we report on our liaison positions and other committees regionally that we sit upon. So Jim, you want to go first?
Sir, thank you very much, Mayor. The only thing I might have to update on, first of all, continue to be an advisor with the Morgan Territory people on their desire to professionalize their volunteer fire operation. I want to thank particularly Chief Warren and Sergeant Shaw. They assisted us in providing information relative to acquiring a CERT-type trailer with equipment via a grant. So that's it for me and I thank again the department for assisting me on that.
Thank you, Jim. Tuya?
So together with Councilmember Wolf, we had the Public Safety Committee meeting, the first meeting on August 5th, and we'll provide a separate report on that in a moment. I attended the mayor's conference, also webinar format, Zoom format, on August 6th. I attended the Race Relations webinar that also happened on the evening of August 6th and as a community member have had some of the committee meetings since that last meeting in preparation for the next webinar. And then together with Planning Commissioners Cloven and Denzlow, we held a first housing webinar on August 12th and the purpose of that is really just to disseminate information, not to provide any advocacy, but really to provide a little bit more information about the housing laws that apply to Clayton, how the RENA process works and a few things like that. So we had our first webinar on that also and that's it.
Thank you, Tuya. CW?
Well, for the second meeting in a row, my report is exactly the same as Tuya's. So that's it. Let me know when we're supposed to talk about our ad hoc Public Safety Committee and when we need to give that report and I'll do that.
All right. Jeff?
Yeah, I spent, I think, the better part of two weeks talking with folks just around town, trying to, still trying to meet with people, although doing so in this time is mostly on the phone now because no one wants to be face to face. So there you go. Lots of email, lots of phone calls.
I think we've all been doing a lot of that. I will just report, I had two official meetings, the Housing Methodology Committee, which met in a marathon four-hour session last week with one 10-minute break. And then the mayor's conference where the subject was what recommendation to make regarding planned area 2050 and the RENA numbers and advise sending letters to the ABAG Executive Board regarding our concerns about what might be the recommendation. There's more on that in the agenda item coming up this evening. So we'll have a more complete discussion on that. Fran, can I ask you when you want to take the, I would think that the report out from the subcommittee should be now?
Yes, that would be good.
Yeah, I don't see it as a separate item. So I would think that this is the report out from the subcommittee, correct, Ma? Okay. I saw the nodding head, yes. All right, subcommittee on the Public Safety Subcommittee, please.
Okay, I'll take that. And we had about 30 attendees and lasted about 90 minutes. Our council member Catalano and I, along with Chief Warren, the interim city manager, Fran Robustelli, we're all in attendance. And in that 90 minutes, we were only able to get through one of the discussion items on the agenda, which was Agenda Item A, a discussion regarding the recognition of the Clayton Police Department's service to the community, including the timing and method options. And Chief Warren was very explicit in what she wanted to want to happen and we concur and the public concurs that Chief Warren proposed a banner placed at each city entrance stating the support for the Clayton Police Department in particular and for law enforcement during the week of May 16th, 2021, which is Law Enforcement Week. She'd rather do that than fly an official flag of any kind. CPD doesn't want to cause any or add any division to the city and most of the CPD officers appreciate verbal acknowledgement for a job well done. They like cards, they like food and gifts, like sweets and sandwiches and you know what police officer doesn't like a donut? I know my dad did. And so you can deliver those to the CPD office rather than flying a flag. That's what they would prefer. So again, the public comments supported this approach and the committee concurs with that. So that's what we're going to propose for next May.
Okay.
Potential additional training was also on the docket and our other resources that are supportive and helpful to the police department. And discussion came down to a request for more funding. I mean, that's really the bottom line. Adding another police officer to the payroll would be ideal, as would additional behavioral training. And I think we'll discuss more about that and come back to you with a more specific recommendation after our next meeting. Public comments supported this as well. Public comments also, we're talking about traffic violations, speeding and safety, which I know we're going to get to tonight. The chief agrees and mentioned that adding a dedicated traffic officer to the CPD would be effective, but would be costly. So it's something we should, we should take a look at. Now, on the non-agenda side, public comment regarding the sign at a local business that some citizens felt to be distasteful came up. Wide-ranging discussion on that and the city staff explained that the sign on the property is on private property and the city can't take any action as this is a First Amendment rights issue and no laws or ordinances are being broken. We also noted that this issue is and should be between the landlord of the building and the tenant. And the public asked for more clarification on the law from our city attorney, which I'm sure we can get to them. And subsequently though, the sign has been altered. And finally, public comment asked for additional notices and advertising of, better advertising of committee and city council meetings. And I could certainly concur with that. This might include a flyer, flyer and the pioneer as a general advertising, as well as more social media and more announcements just in general. The public also asked for a simpler way to get into Zoom and for public meetings, asking that there be no registration requirement. So that will be our report for this initial go-around. I think it was a good meeting. And like I said, we had about 30 people in attendance and we've asked people to spread the word so that the next meeting can be even more in-depth. That's my report. Our report, Tuya, if you have anything else?
No, I mean, echo entirely what CW just said. And the only addition is I think that, I think we're both very happy to see how much participation we got and particularly how constructive all the participants were. So I think this is going to be a very productive committee in terms of discussing some of these issues.
Plus, the format, by the way, was really good. I think being able to have this kind of back and forth conversation with citizens was really, really important as opposed to just sitting and listening. It was, it was, it was really nice to be able to finally have a conversation.
Conversations are important. Do you have a date for your next meeting planned yet?
We don't.
We don't, but we'll come back to, we'll do a little better job advertising the date ahead of time as well.
Right. We kind of got pressed on this one to get into it quickly, but we do want to make sure people have an advance notice. And we don't want to be up against any other things that are going on in town as well. So some things to plan for, but we will get a date out ASAP.
Okay, very good. And I know that our interim city manager is working on outreach and communication and how to improve that. And I'm sure she'll have another report on that probably at our next meeting on what's going on there. But I know she's working hard on expanding our resources to get information out to the public. So that's in transition. We now have a report from Keith Hayden, who is our liaison to the County Connection Board. He is also the chair of the board this year, I believe. So Keith, I will unmute you, or you can unmute yourself, actually. Can you unmute yourself? I'll unmute, you know, I'll unmute you if I can. Keith, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
I believe so now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, very good. This is a report summarizing the COVID-19 mitigation efforts that have been done by the County Connection staff regarding their bus and van fleet since the stay-at-home order was issued by the Contra Costa County back in March. Wanted to give the council an update on this. I did provide you with the summary for your packet, but I wanted to give a live presentation mainly for the benefit of the community listening in, to reassure them and the council that the County Connection buses, vans and system are being kept as clean, safe and efficient as possible under these challenging conditions. So I did want to bring up some of the more important issues rather than read the entire summary that I provided you. So that's really the intent of this evening's presentation. So in general, when the order was issued back in March, all employees 65 and older were given an offer by the County Connection bus system that they could stay home and get paid for two weeks. And this is because, if you might remember, the, anyone 65 and older was placed in a high-risk category. So we wanted to make sure any drivers or other employees of the system, if they felt uncomfortable coming to work, if they wanted to take that two weeks off, it would be authorized with pay. A few took that offer, but they all returned to work within the two weeks and that's been fine. We've also suspended our attendance policies because of various reasons coming up with people unable to maybe be there on time because of other issues. And we just felt in the best interest of everyone providing service, we did suspend those. Any employee that was required to shelter in place due to a positive COVID-19 test or came in contact with a positive individual, we authorize them to receive full pay for up to two weeks or longer based on the evaluation. Two people did test positive since March. One of them did recover and has returned to work. The other is in treatment. Facial coverings are of course required at all facilities at all times by staff and all passengers of the various vehicles that are being used. The protective personal gear is available for all of our employees, gloves, masks, wipes and sanitizer. We post signage throughout all of the buildings onsite and on all the electronic bulletin boards, stressing again the importance of frequent handwashing, social distancing and facial covering. We maintain strong communications with the county health department and share any updates immediately with our entire staff and resource. The Contra Costa Health experts have actually come out and provided, most of it was activated by Zoom, multiple training and informational sessions with both the County Connection and the Transdev, the parent transit contractor that we use for use of the protective equipment as well as further suggestions on how to maintain effective barriers against contact. The administrative offices were closed immediately on the 18th and all nonessential staff is telecommuting from home. Employees that do come onsite must wear masks when walking around the office. Any meetings, and meetings are kept to a real minimum, any meetings that are held, go ahead and implement the social distancing and mask requirement for all attendees. As far as transportation, we are As far as transportation, we again are providing the personal protective equipment bags for all operators. This consists of gloves, masks, wipes and sanitizers and fabric masks and shields have been distributed as well. All the dispatch and transit supervisors follow the procedures and ask each operator when they show up for their duty, they ask them a number of questions such as whether or not they have a fever, any flu-like conditions or any concerns that they should be sharing with their supervisors before taking over their shift. They are then advised to go straight to their buses, keep all contact to a minimum. All fare collection has been suspended and that was on the buses to minimize all contact between the drivers and the passengers. And that was to protect both drivers and passengers. Fares may resume in the near future, but so far we have continued to waive fares to enable a more comfortable position for the passengers entering the buses mainly. All reliefs are made at the county bus yard. No reliefs are made in the field when any bus drivers are changing shifts. And typically in the past, they often were able to do that in the field. Now we require them to come back in and that's done for a couple of reasons. First, to maintain minimum contact, but also to clean the buses. We clean the buses very, very well every night. And then if they are used for a second shifter in the day, they're again fogged and cleaned before they're released again for another route. The fixed route buses are equipped with a fresh air intake. And in all of our buses, we've been increasing that to the maximum possibility to completely replace all of the air on each bus within one and a half to two minutes. So that's a constant stream of fresh air to be provided. They also installed Plexiglas shields around the driver's seat to provide more restriction for any air movement reaching the driver. This is to protect again, both the operators and the passengers. And they retrofitted the buses to allow entry from the rear door. Typically that is blocked and passengers are required to enter through the front to pay the fare and so forth. But obviously with the focus on maintaining a minimum contact opportunity, we have them entering through the back door. Now signage is installed on all the buses. We do require social distancing on the buses. So you might imagine the large buses, the capacity then is limited to no more than 10 passengers to actually practice social distancing. And whenever any of the buses reach that maximum capacity, another bus is called in very quickly to come in behind that bus. So no passengers are left waiting very long at the bus stop. And that's been working very well when that does occur. And it's rare that that's been happening, but when it does occur, the passengers understand the issue and are very patient waiting for the next bus. We have been working on the facilities maintenance as well. So all of the facilities for the bus fleet receive an antiviral electrostatic treatment twice a week. All the flooring throughout facilities is marked for social distancing. All the high tech services are cleaned every day. The tables have all been separated to provide proper distancing. So they're really trying to set a good example and provide the maximum protection for all of the employees. We also work with the paratransit TransDev Provider of Services. The Board of Directors authorized an amendment for those services in light of the COVID-19 mitigation efforts. That's a very strong partnership that's continued to work very well. Many of those operators and supervisors have specialized safety trainings themselves and are able to provide that transportation for COVID-19 positive individuals to hotels or to healthcare facilities. They also offer this to the homeless as designated and they're contacted for that and provide that transportation as well. They've been custom fitted with plastic barriers wherever possible for that as well. We've also utilized the vans for mail delivery, excuse me, for meal delivery so that we can assist with the Meals on Wheels programs and offering that to the Contra Costa Food Bank, Mount Diablo Unified School District, because many of the students attending schools were receiving lunches and sometimes breakfast as well at the schools. So rather than cut them off from that meal, we have been delivering many of those meals to ensure that they're getting maximum service also. So hopefully this reassures the council and our community that the County Connection system is operating as safely and efficiently as possible. And wanted to make sure that you were aware of that as all as well. I'll continue to keep you updated on that. Wanted to know if there's any questions about that summary. I have some more information I'd like to share about how the whole system is operating, but I wanted to stop here in case you had questions on the summary I just provided.
Any questions from the council members? It sounds like they're providing a wonderful service, maybe redefining their role in the community to some extent. That's great. Did you have a little bit more, Keith?
Yes, I did. Actually, I wanted to remind everyone that the County Connection does provide bus service and has continued the two main lines into Clayton. The Route 10 during the weekday and that's full service during the weekday and Route 310 on the weekends. And so that both of those lines have continued in service. We've seen obvious reduction of ridership, but we wanted to maintain that so people that wanted to utilize the bus system could rely on that. We do have our weekend service go further into the night. It operates until nine o'clock. Just to remind the community, there's four stops in Clayton. There's one at the Washington Boulevard and Clayton Road right by Clayton Station. There's one at Center Street and easily out in front of Diamond Terrace. There's one at Marsh Creek and Bigelow near the middle school. And then of course, the main one in front of the Clayton Library. So those are all the sites being provided with daily stops. Ridership is down, as I mentioned. It was down to about 65% of normal and then began to rise until the latest restrictions went into effect. And now it's back down to only about 30% on the weekdays. But we're still receiving about 50% ridership on the weekends, which we believe is related to non-work trips that many families are taking that rely on the buses for those services. So far, the funding, as you might imagine, we're very concerned about the funding with the revenue source being cut off at the buses. And the CARES Act funding has been covering all of our revenue shortfall. So we're certainly hoping that we get additional federal funding approved so that we can continue to cover that shortfall. We are also finalizing an updated injury and illness prevention program that will include COVID-19 exposure and prevention control program. And once we approve that, we're going to actually be posting that program on the County Connection website for the public's use. We think they would also find some very valuable information in that exposure prevention and control program. So I wanted to share all this updated information. I'll continue to keep the council and community updated as the County Connection continues to provide this reliable, efficient service in a very safe manner to our community. And then as a final note, as Julie indicated, I have been elected to serve as the Chair of the County Connection Board of Directors for the next term, which will begin next month. So appreciate continuing to represent Clayton on the board. So any questions from the council?
Very good. Thank you, Keith. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Appreciate it.
I'm gonna I'm gonna move you back to an attendee, Keith.
All right.
You can continue to watch. Thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to introduce our Clayton City Council candidates who have filed to run for the three seats available on the November election. We have six candidates who have filed. You will see many of their names on your screen. I will unmute them in the and activate their video in the order in which they are listed on the ballot. Rather than trying to find an artificial alphabetical or non alphabetical or something, we decided to use the way they will be listed on the ballot, which is determined by a drawing by the state. And so the first up will be Holly Tillman. The second will be Frank Gavidia. The third will be Glenn Miller, followed by Jim Diaz, Tuya Catalano and Peter Cloven. So we will take them in that order. You have three minutes. Try to keep your comments to that amount of time and we will go to Holly and I'm going to ask Holly to unmute herself and to start the video. There you are.
Hi.
You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and fellow residents. My name is Leetitia Tillman, but most people know me as Holly. I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to tell you about myself. So I was born and raised in Barstow, California, which is in the Mojave Desert. It's a small town. And my husband and my husband, Matt and I bought our house here in Clayton in 2003 because it made me feel at home. Watching our daughters, Jordan and Jada, grow up in this community has given me a sense of pride that we made the right decision. As a 17-year resident and volunteer in Clayton, I am running for city council because I have a passion for preserving our incredible sense of community while bringing us into the future through greater inclusivity and transparency. When I was six years old, living in Barstow, we had a new neighbor move in next door and I was excited to have a new friend. One day Douglas saw me sitting outside reading and he asked me to read him the book. Instead, I decided to try to hand him the book. And he declined it. He just shook his head no. And I asked him if he knew how to read. The more I tried to force him to take the book, the lower his head dropped. It was at that moment that I realized that Douglas didn't know how to read. And so I asked him and he said no. So I took that opportunity and I jumped up and ran in the house and grabbed my Dick and Jane books and I came outside and thus started our first reading lesson. Since then, I've been drawn to helping people. I left Barstow to attend UCLA and there I earned my degree in sociology. This program taught me great critical thinking skills as well as listening skills that I would need as a client relations director. I've used that in my role as a client relations director for a major financial institution. I'm a problem solver. My work for the past 20 years requires me to listen carefully to my clients to determine their needs, then find solutions that work best for them. I take these skills into my personal and community life where I am known as a go getter, one who meets issues head on, fearless and helping to find the best solutions. I became actively involved in our community when Jordan started elementary school and I noticed a friction between the parents and the teachers while attending PFC meetings. PFC is parent faculty club. I became the PFC president, not only to lead the organization, but to also be a catalyst to move the school forward in a positive direction. Since then, I have given back to Clayton in many ways, including serving on numerous committees benefiting Mount Diablo Elementary, such as the Site Council and Playfield Committee in addition to being the PFC President and Vice President of Education. Also running the St. Bonaventure Track Program with my husband Matt. We've been doing that for several years. Volunteering for CBCA meetings, I mean, sorry, events and eventually serving as Board Secretary, which I am currently. Also organizing Clayton Speaks, which is a collective forum by Clayton residents to provide a forum for important discussions on race relations. We are living in unprecedented time together and sometimes a range of emotions can be overwhelming. There is a lot going on in Clayton right now. Highly charged issues like housing, racism, residents being profiled by police that we're being told and neighbors feeling unwelcome. Many residents are becoming more active in local politics, engaging on social media and in conversations. Although emotions are running high, I am hopeful that we can foster constructive dialogue going forward. It's about time we work together as one community. With the right leadership, we can capture the spirit of respectful, transparent dialogue to preserve our sense of community and become a more inclusive town. If you would like to know more about my campaign, I would ask you to visit my website, which is holly, the number four, claytoncitycouncil.com. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have at that on that site. And I look forward to earning your vote beginning this October, October 5th, which is when early voting starts. Thank you.
Holly, thank you very much. Holly, I'm going to move you to the attendee role and you can continue to watch the rest of the meeting. All right, the next speaker is Frank Gavidia and I'm scrolling down to find Frank on my screen. There is Frank. There he is. Oops, unmute and you are you up here? Yeah, there you are. Very good.
Good to go, Mayor.
You're here, we can hear you. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good evening, members of the city council. Good evening, my fellow Clayton citizens. My name is Frank Gavidia and I am running for city council. A little bit about myself. I'm a proud father, a husband, a small business owner. I currently volunteer and coach at Mount Diablo Soccer Association on an elite team and I also serve on their board. I've done that for many, many, many years. I'm also one of your planning commissioners and I'm a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. I'm running for city council on five key issues. I'm going to start with transparency. I believe that Clayton citizens need to be better informed and I think we can do better. If elected, I will do more than the bare legal minimum. If I have to walk the streets and knock on your door to let you know about a zoning meeting that's coming up that could potentially put a three-story building across the street from your house, I'm willing to do that. I think it's important that we as city council members do more than the bare legal minimum. I'm running on the issue of money and politics. I promise not to take any money from anyone. I also promise to continue to donate any funds I earn from the city as I have done since I was appointed to the planning commission to worthy causes. Another issue that I'm running on fellow Clayton citizens is being ruled by fear. We've constantly been told we have to do this, we have to vote for that. If we don't, we're going to be sued, we're going to be bankrupted. I don't think this is how you want your city council to run your city. If elected, I would make sure Sacramento is well aware of what we're okay with and what we're not okay with. Sacramento, those representatives also represent us and I think they need to hear from us at the city council level. I'm running on the issue of actions versus words. It's very easy to say, hey, I'm for local control, but in many instances, that doesn't seem to be the case. Either votes or actions don't line up with that. In my case, I am 100% for local control. I do not believe we should cede control to a regional body, to A-BAG, to Sacramento or the feds, and my record proves that. Lastly, I am for term limits. I believe that a city council member should serve no more than two terms. Being on the city council for 16 years, 28 years, I think crowds out new blood. It discourages new citizens and it's not inclusive from running for city council. As Clayton changes and as new people move into the city, I think it's important that I, as your city council member, help you by reaching to the community and helping you understand the process so that you can eventually one day run for office. I will never answer you in platitudes. All of my positions are clearly stated on my website, frankfor, and that's F-O-R, clayton.com. And I would like you to visit and read more about me. I hope to earn your vote. I do love Clayton very much and thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. We will move you to an attendee at this point and we will go to our next speaker who is Glenn Miller. I'm going to ask you to unmute Glenn and ask you to start your video, please. Glenn, can you unmute? There you are, but you're still muted.
Yeah.
There we go. We can hear you now. Go ahead, Glenn. Whoops.
Hello?
You're muted again.
Okay, I'll get started. My name is Glenn Miller. I'm a resident since 1998. I'm a retired licensed civil engineer. The background in structural engineering and 20-plus years of experience in project and construction management. One of the projects of which was I was asked to serve as project manager and construction manager for the Dean Martini Wine for the Dean Martini Winery City Hall project. And that went so well, I was asked to serve as the construction, planning and construction contract coordinator for the Endeavor Hall project and was part of the conceptual design team for the preservation of the Keller House. I think that those projects and the serving on those projects gives me a kind of a unique perspective as to the understanding of the values, the vision and the rich history of Clayton. And I hope to build on that as a city council member and I hope to preserve that. Other service work I've done is I was a volunteer for the registration for the Fourth of July parade for about three years. They served as a two-time planning commissioner during which I rose to chair. I was and was part of the committee efforts for the design of the downtown park. I've, we also had several challenging projects, which I'll get back to in a minute. But I want to, want to shout out to the, one of the unique blessings of my ability to have served. And that is for the past thirteen years, I've been serving the Mount Diablo Elementary Kindergarteners, their parents and especially the kids, as they all know me as Mr. Miller, the guy that read to them on Fridays and did motor skills on Wednesdays. It's been, it's been a blessing and I want to thank, publicly thank the kindergarten teachers for allowing me to serve for so long. And I plan to do it when, once we get back to that kind of ability. I'm, I'm running for a lot of the similar reasons that Frank just put, put out. So I won't kind of repeat them. But one of the things that I did do as planning commissioner, we were challenged with a couple of projects that I think are significant for our clients. First was a project that was supposed to be zoned for multi-family and multi, actually attached buildings, more higher dense, high density, mid-range to high density projects. First, first thing we did was go out to the neighbors, get some consensus as to what they wanted to see and brought this back to several developers. And a developer came forth. And as a result, we, we wound up with the planned community that we now know in the community called Bridlewood. And I think it's a, has been a big asset for the community. The second project was the project that is downtown. Some people call it the tall skinny houses. It's called, it's, I guess the official name is Mitchell Place. Once again, this, this had the potential to be a lot denser. We went to several of the residents that were close by, reached a consensus, provided some open space. And we did it in the planned development mode, which I think is the best road to go for future development. And I, I agree with Frank, outside influences do not. The third, the last reason is that as my engineering background has, and construction background has given me a set of skills that I can make sure that the services that we pay for are provided. We've had some occasion when it's not. And unfortunately, I think we should, we need to take a harder look at that. So thanks for the opportunity and I'll move on.
Thank you, Glenn. And I will again change you to an attendee so you can continue to watch the meeting. And we will next go to Jim Diaz. Jim, you have three minutes.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I go into about myself, I want to thank you for your service to this community. You've accomplished many things. Jim Diaz, forty plus year member of this community, moved here in nineteen seventy-nine. So seen a lot of change in this town, grown from thirty-six hundred people to nearly to twelve thousand. I'm a small business owner. I was on the planning commission. And I was the former police lieutenant in charge of the Clayton Police Reserve Division for ten years and had been actively involved with the Clayton Business and Community Association since nineteen ninety-eight. The three areas that I am looking to see take place and continue. Number one, public safety. Number two, improving our quality of life. And number three, listening to people. I've always been available. People have seen me at the concerts and all of the other activities that we have around town. And they're not, I've always been available to hear them out. I am deeply concerned about Clayton's small town feel for all now and in the future. I continue, want to help steer the city on its never ending pursuit of fiscal responsibility. For those of you that may remember, a year, two, three years ago, the county ran out of funding for number of our fire stations. And Station Eleven was put on extremely reduced hours. And I spearheaded that move to get funding back for the station. And we were successful to get Station Eleven back open to full time, fully staffed. We now are very fortunate to have a good revenue stream coming back from the county so that that station stays open. I maintain very close contact with the, with the fire department. Public safety, number one. Finally, I want to make sure that all citizens know their rights, but at the same time, understand their responsibilities as citizens. The best way is to ensure this through vigorous but civil discourse, in person and on social media. You may find out more about me on reelectjimdeas.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Next we'll go to Tuya Catalano. Tuya?
Hey, so good evening. I'm Tuya Catalano and I am first and foremost a mom of two kids. I have a high school senior and an eighth grader. I've been a Clayton resident and homeowner since two thousand and five. I work as a land use attorney in San Francisco. And I'm currently serving my first term on the city council. I previously served on the planning commission and I was honored to be Clayton mayor last year in two thousand and nineteen. I'm an active CBCA member and I've been the adult volunteer coordinator for art and wine and Oktoberfest for the last several years. And I've been the chair of the scholarship committee for the last five years. I'm also a very proud Dana Hills swim team parent for the last nine years. And you usually find me behind the computer desk, running the meat computer on swim meets. So I grew up in a small town in Finland and I moved to Clayton in part because of its size and charm. And I want my kids and everyone else to continue to enjoy what small cities and communities like Clayton can offer. Fortunately, Clayton today is substantially the same city it was fifteen years ago when my family moved here. It is still a safe, small town with great schools, excellent recreation and open space amenities and residents that keep and create a community through volunteering and other efforts. I absolutely want to keep it that way. One of the challenges we face in two thousand and twenty and going forward is increasingly more state mandates that make local governance more challenging, especially related to housing legislation. We need to be smart about how we address that. And instead of empty words about standing up to Sacramento, I would encourage all of our residents to question in detail what each candidate is proposing, whether that means that they will not comply with state laws. And overall, consider how effective their proposal is and how it will impact our community. So my overall priorities and what I believe I can bring to the community include providing leadership that is committed to fiscally responsible decisions in order to ensure that Clayton is able to balance its budget every year and is able to maintain the safety and services we all enjoy. Very little of our small town charm is left if we can no longer pay for the police and all other services we enjoy and appreciate. I will also use my experience in land use and government politics in general to help navigate state mandates in the most positive manner possible in order to preserve small town character. I will continue to support diversity, equality and inclusion, such as co-sponsoring the Rainbow Flag and Jude Pride Month, supporting the race relations dialogue and proposing the resolution condemning racism. I will continue to govern with integrity, making educated and informed decisions that are in the best interest of Clayton as a whole. And I think in sum, I would be honored to have your support of our second term to continue to provide fiscally responsible and inclusive leadership. And my website is catalanoforclayton.com and it has more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tuya. And finally, we will go to Peter Cloven. And Peter, are you unmuted? Where are you? There you are, you're unmuted. Can we turn on your video? Let me see if I can do that. Ask you to start your video if you want. There you are. We can hear you now, Peter. Go ahead, you have three.
Hey, my name is Peter Cloven and I'm your current chair of the planning commission. And in three minutes, will never be enough time for me to tell you about Clayton, the city of love. But I'm going to give it a try. You see, I'm a fourteen year resident. I'm a small business owner and I'm a father of two teenage daughters. One's a freshman and one's a senior Clayton Valley Charter High School. And I'm obviously very proud. We moved to Clayton because it's a safe, friendly community, small town values and great opportunities for family oriented things to do. And as a family, we were involved in swim team, Girl Scouts, dance, AYSO soccer. And I was a girl soccer coach for ten years. Now, a typical summer weekend for our family would include Friday night bocce, Saturday morning at Dana Hills Swim Team, Saturday evening concerts in the park and Sunday at Clayton Valley Presbyterian Church where our family attends. Like I said, I love Clayton. And I will do everything as your council member to conserve Clayton's character for all of our families. You see, I understand what it's like to be on both sides of an issue. As a resident, six years ago, I worked with my fellow neighbors to successfully affect change on a proposed project that really didn't comply with environmental standards. However, as a planning commissioner, I've had to make hard choices, hard choices based on data that protected Clayton from needless litigation, could bankrupt the city. You know, that's something I would never do. You see, leadership is about evaluating every aspect of an individual issue. And then coming to decision, what is Clayton's best interest? What is at its heart? This is how I choose to lead. On the city council, I guarantee you, I will listen to you, just as I was listened to six years ago. And your voice will be heard and it will make a difference. Why is that important? Sacramento continues to voice one size fits all legislation right down our throat. And it really minimizes our local control. Now, there are going to be some that say no to everything. But those people have no solutions, no answers and no vision. And they won't dare to speculate on what the financial and social repercussions of their position is. However, I believe that, you know, as a coalition of informed citizens and city leaders, that we can together provide a shape and a vision for Clayton that conserves its character. That's the very foundation of our community that includes safety and services and the values that we all cherish. You can count on me to provide constant, transparent and independent communication for all the issues that face us because I'm an environmental scientist and I'm science and data driven. And as such, I will deliver a full accounting my rationale for every one of my decisions. I will be inclusive. And I will be a voice of civility that models the behavior that's consistent with our city's motto and do the right thing. I may be last on the ballot, but I'm first in my love for Clayton. And you can count on me. I humbly ask for your support in November. And you can reach my positions on clovennumberfourclayton.com. Thanks for your support. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Peter. And that concludes this, the conversations by our council candidates. Thank you all for being here. We will do this every meeting until the election. We are likely to take you in different orders each time so that no one gets preferential treatment. I would suspect that the next time we will be starting with the person who is in the number two position on the ballot and we will rotate through those as we have each subsequent meeting. So the next item on our agenda this evening is public comment. And this is a time for people in the public to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So I will go to see who our hands are that are raised. Our first speaker, Mala. I have a council candidate asking to speak under public comment. That is permitted, yes?
Yes, it is. It will be of, separate from the previous comments that were made as council candidates.
Right. Okay, so this is for non-agenda items pertaining to the business of the city of Clayton. So Frank Gavidia, you will go first. And then any other hands that are raised, we will call on them at that time. So if you can unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted.
Okay.
Can you go?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Three minutes.
Thank you. I wanted to make a comment. I am aware that last month, Councilman Diaz requested that the city recognize, or at least I'm unfamiliar with the term, but that we recognize Hispanic Heritage Month. And given that inclusivity has become so important as a member of the Hispanic community, I hope the city goes ahead with this and makes it happen. The population of Clayton, according to the last census data that I have available, says that we are ten point nine percent of the population. So I hope to see this happen. And Councilman Diaz, thank you very much for bringing it forward. I hope that, that it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And just a note for the record, Councilmember Diaz is working on the resolution for that. We will hear that in September. So I do not see any other raised hands among our public members. So we will close the public comment period and we have no public hearings.
There's one more person that raised.
Sorry, somebody just popped in. Irina, go right ahead. You are unmuted. Go ahead and speak.
Yes, I have a question about the speed limits. Is that on the agenda or it's, or it's still up for discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you're asking about.
It's the first agenda item on the action items.
If you're asking about speed limits, that's the next agenda item.
Okay, so that's, that's the only one I'm interested in.
Okay, we'll look for your hand under that item then. Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other raised hands. So we were closed public comment. We will go on to our action items. The first one is indeed the consideration of adoption of a resolution accepting the draft citywide engineering and traffic survey, recommending increases in speed limits on four different streets. And we have a report from the city engineer. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am actually going to hand this off to our traffic engineer, Lynn Filson. And she's going to give the report, the staff report. And then we'll both be available for questions after the report or the presentation that Lynn makes regarding this subject. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Very good. Welcome, Lynn. You are unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. I don't know if you have to allow me to do it and if you will let me know when.
We have your screen in front of us.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and city council. I know this is a tough, tough topic. So I'll try and explain as much as I can and be happy to answer any questions. So at the, requested the police department because our old engineering and traffic surveys have expired. Harrison Associates has conducted an additional or new surveys for the city. Now, of course, it's not moving forward. Hold on. So the first question is why do an engineering and traffic survey? And this is all based on the vehicle code. So the vehicle code requires that an engineering and traffic survey be conducted on arterial and collector streets in order for the police department to enforce radar on those streets. Each engineer, engineering and traffic survey is valid for five years and they can be extended for up to an additional five years if the conditions on the roadway or the land use adjacent to the roadway have not substantially changed. So this would be if you had a rural area that developed, that would be a substantial change. Or if the street was widened or restrated. or if the street was widened or restriped for a different number of lanes, that would be a reason that you couldn't just re-certify the old one. The CBC, the California Vehicle Code, delegates the responsibility for determining the procedures for conducting an engineering and traffic survey to the Department of Transportation, which is Caltrans. So the first question might be, which streets are arterials and collectors? And those are the ones that the CBC has said must have an engineering and traffic survey. So the CBC says that the California Road System maps are to be used to make those determinations. So this is a copy of one of the sections of the California Road System map that shows the city of Clayton, and in that there are 22 segments of roadway that are identified as collectors or arterials, and those are the ones that we studied. Some of the roadways in Clayton, we had to break into segments because each segment that we study has to have similar characteristics so that when we do check on the speeds, it's based on the land use around it. So the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, has put forth the procedure for doing engineering and traffic surveys in the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. And as a traffic engineer, this is our bible of how we do traffic engineering in the state of California. In the book, it discusses that the main item to use in setting speed limits on streets is the 85th percentile speed. So this is pretty much saying that we're going to look at how fast traffic is going on a street, assume that most people are reasonable, and that is what the speed limit should be. So in reality, the motorists are the ones that are driving what the speed limit should be on the street. Other factors that can be considered are the road characteristics, such as shoulders, grades, alignment, sight distance, things of that nature, the pace, and I'll get into that in a moment, the roadside development and environmental factors, how much parking and pedestrian activity there is on the roadway, and the collision rates. So the 85th percentile speed is sometimes called the critical speed, and it's the speed at which 85% of the motorists drive on a given road unaffected by slower traffic before weather. So this speed indicates the speed that most motorists on the roadway consider a safe and a reasonable speed. It's the speed that 85% of the motorists are going at this speed or slower. The requirement is that the speed limit should be posted at the nearest 5 mile an hour increment to the 85th percentile speed of pre-flowing traffic. And based on the characteristics and the other factors that were on the previous slide, we can lower the speed limit 5 miles an hour from that nearest increment based on those factors. The MUTCD will not allow any further reduction other than the 5 miles an hour below the rounded 85th percentile speed. So the pace is the 10 mile per hour spread that the most vehicles fall into that category. So you can have a lot of vehicles that go everywhere from 10 to 60 miles an hour. You survey them, and the 10 mile an hour grouping of speeds is the pace. If a high percentage of the vehicles are in the pace, it means that we have very consistent traffic speeds. So if, you know, most of the people are going, say, between 35 and 45 miles an hour, that's pretty much saying that this is what people find as a reasonable speed on that roadway. And if we have, you know, 70, 80% of motorists going that speed, that's a good sign in that we don't have a big conflict between different roadway speeds. If we have a low percentage of vehicles in the pace, it means that the segments, that the motorists are going at a much more varied speeds, and these big variations in speed generally result in a higher collision rate. Based on the survey data that we collected for the 22 segments of roadways in the city of Clayton, four roadway segments will require us to recommend a speed limit that is 5 miles an hour greater than what it currently is. And this is so that the police department can use radar for speed enforcement on these segments. The four roadway segments are Eagle Peak Drive between Oakhurst Drive and Keller Ridge Drive, Clayton Road, two segments on Clayton Road between Mitchell Canyon and Oakhurst, and between Oakhurst and Marsh Creek, and Mount Air Parkway between Marsh Creek Road and Mount Air Circle. So this is a map that shows where the segments are in the city of Antioch. You can see it's a good portion of Clayton Road, the portion of Eagle Peak that is just along the east side of the loop, and the four-lane section of Mount Air Parkway. So Eagle Peak Drive, the current speed in the municipal code is 30 miles per hour. There are no speed limit signs on that stretch of roadway that say 30 miles an hour. I believe there's one out there that says 15 miles an hour for the grade. That should be changed over to an advisory speed for the grade rather than a regulatory one because 15 miles an hour is not in the municipal code and legally cannot be in the municipal code. When we surveyed this street, the 85th percentile speed was 40 miles an hour. And with the criteria that I discussed earlier, when we round it, we get 40 miles an hour, and then we can lower that by 35 miles per hour. And, excuse me, lower that by 5 miles an hour to get 35. We use the recommendation of 35 based on the pace is a little bit slower than the 85th percentile, and we didn't have a lot in the pace, and there are grades and sight distance on this road that need to be considered. Clayton Road between Washington and Mitchell Canyon, the existing speed limit is 40 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed is 51. So that is saying that most of the drivers are going at 51 miles per hour or slower, and that that would be a speed limit that we would set, you know, at 50, rounding to the nearest 5 miles per hour, that most drivers on the road would not be violating the law. We are recommending that the speed limit be set at 45 miles per hour, which is 5 miles an hour below the 50 mile an hour that the 85th percentile would require. And this is due to a relatively low pace and a very low percentage of people in the pace. The next stretch of Clayton Road has an existing speed limit of 40 miles an hour. It also has an 85th percentile speed of 51 miles per hour. So we are recommending that we lower the 50 mile an hour speed limit that would be required based on just using the California MUTCD requirements. And we are doing that based on the fact that there is a school there, it's access to the downtown, and there is also a low percentage of people in the peak at this location. I did wanna note that even though the speed limit is currently 40 and we're proposing 45, that this is a school zone in this area, and it is signed, and we can double-check and make sure that it's very clearly marked and maybe add signs if needed, that it is 25 miles an hour when children are present. Mount Air Parkway between Marsh Creek and Mount Air is the additional segment. It is currently in the municipal code and posted at 30 miles an hour. The 85th percentile speed is 40 miles per hour, so that is the speed that most drivers go on that roadway. So we have lowered the 40 miles an hour by 5 miles an hour and have a recommended speed of 35 miles per hour due to the front-on residential nature and the low number or low percentage in the pace also. So, obviously, nobody likes to have the speed limits raised, so there are some things that maybe we can do to help lower the 85th percentile speed. The MUTCD states that the speed of traffic should not be altered by concentrated law enforcement or other means just prior to or while taking the speed measurements. So just going out there, sending the police out for two weeks and then doing another survey is not permissible. So there are several actions that we may be able to take if we would like to do something a little bit different. One is to do an ongoing educational campaign. So we can't do one that's just like, you know, two weeks prior to taking the survey. So it would have to be ongoing, so it's not something that is concentrated right before we do this. Two possibilities are targeting parents through the schools. We might have to wait till COVID-19 is over for that one, and using social media media to target younger drivers, as it is. In studies, it does show that younger drivers tend to drive faster. Another option would be to do a seal coat, which is, you know, a thin pavement treatment on Mount Air Parkway in the four-lane section to obliterate the existing striping and re-stripe it with one lane in each direction and a two-way left turn lane and bike lane. And I think this, first of all, is much nicer if you're a bicycle list, but it also constricts your lanes in one direction, which has a tendency, through many, many studies, to slow traffic in this case. So that might be something we could do, and then resurvey it and see if that changes that 85th percentile speed. Other traffic calming devices, such as radar feedback signs, can be used. That might be a good alternative for Clayton Road. And lastly, of the four E's, education, enforcement, and engineering, is a long-term enforcement program targeting streets with speeds higher than what the council and the city residents find acceptable. That would require extra patrol staff to perform targeted traffic enforcement during peak travel times. For the Mount Air Parkway discussion that I just mentioned, this is what the new striping would look like. It would still have parking in front of people's houses. It would then have a bike lane next to that and one lane in each direction with a two-way left turn lane. Somebody that grew up whose best friend lived on the street that was four lanes and it had a similar situation where they changed to a two-way left turn lane, it was very nice. It made it much easier to back out of your driveway into a kind of safe zone. As a young driver, when I was 16, learning how to drive, it really was very, very helpful. Radar speed back, feedback sign, we have them in town, and they're very effective in reducing speeds. In the report, it's correct in the staff report to city council. It was incorrect in the engineering and traffic survey report. We have an error on the Oakhurst Drive segment, which is the first segment. It shows that it had a recommendation of 45 miles an hour. That is incorrect. We are recommending 40 miles an hour, so there is no change in that segment. So recommended actions at this time is to adopt the resolution accepting the draft Citywide Engineering and Traffic Survey Report, updating Segment 1. There are a few broken links in the data, and we would like the opportunity to put those back in place so that all the data is shown, and introduce by title only the ordinance that changes the speed limits on those four sections. At the city council's option, we would recommend that you direct staff to pursue allowable options to resurvey the four segments that are being recommended for speed limit increases. So obviously, increasing the speed limits is not popular. It's based on the 85th percentile speed, so the speed that people are going on that road. But after the allowable options have been implemented, so we maybe restripped Mount Air Parkway and put in some radar feedback signs on Clayton Road, then resurvey those streets and see if the 85th percentile comes down. We're recommending that at this time you accept the whole report and the increases in speed, and this is so that the police department can continue to use radar to enforce speeds on the roadway segments within the city. If they're not approved, then we kind of lose that as a way to keep speeds down and keep motorists safe. And so we would prefer that this be taken care of now, and then we resurvey the streets at a later date, and hopefully we can bring the speed limits back down. And that is all I have for the presentation, so if there are any questions or anything you would like to ask me, I'd be happy to answer the question.
Okay, I believe I see a hand of the chief. Are you raising your hand, or you're just covering your camera? Okay.
No.
Yeah. Chief, would you like to make any comments on behalf of the police department for this? And Lynn, if you would please stop sharing your screen, then we can see each other more clearly.
If I can figure that out, I will be happy to do so.
Sure, I'll go ahead and just make some comments while she's figuring that out. You know, I realize that the idea of raising the speed limit on any streets is not a popular one, but for practicality, I would like all of you to consider it. It's really important that we're able to use radar to do speed enforcement. If we lose the ability to use radar to do speed enforcement on these four streets, I think it's going to create a less safe environment. And just to give you, you know, kind of some statistics, I polled the numbers of speeding tickets that have been written in the last 18 months, and half of all of our speeding tickets are written on Clayton Road. And of the, that would be 50 tickets in the last 18 months on Clayton Road. If you don't approve the speed survey increase on Clayton Road, the only way we can enforce speed there is the maximum speed law, which is anybody in excess of 65 miles an hour. Of the 50 tickets that we wrote on that roadway, only three people were traveling in excess of 65 miles an hour. So 47 tickets would not be written. You know, so again, I understand that there's a concern about raising the speed limit, but without the ability for us to use radar to speed, I believe that drivers will go faster. So my recommendation is to accept the report in its entirety, and then we put some of these traffic calming measures in place and strategies, and we resurvey in, you know, six or 12 months, depending on shelter-in-place orders, et cetera.
Thank you, chief. I'm gonna make a couple of comments before I take questions from the council and ask some questions- I'm going to make a couple of comments before I take questions from the council and ask some questions. I served on a statewide task force to work with the state on establishing these rules many years ago, probably fifteen years ago. And we were able to keep them from demanding that you round all the way up when you're one mile over the speed limit. Among other things that we accomplished in that task force, working together with our colleagues around the state. I do have a couple of questions for Lynn and for Scott. The traffic report says in the introduction and summary in that first paragraph, it says that most of this study was done in November of 2019. It does say that one segment was done in March. I'd like to know which one was done in March and what was the date of that?
That was Mount Air Parkway, the two-lane section. We had, my bad, we had not split Mount Air Parkway into two segments. And as we were reviewing the data, it was like, this is not going to fly because one is four lanes and one is two lanes. And so we had to go out and redo it. So for the volumes, we adjusted the volume based on statistics that we have right now about what the, how the volumes have changed in areas similar to what we have on Mount Air Parkway and use that to calculate the collisions for million vehicle miles traveled, but the speed was not adjusted. But that section is Mount Air Parkway in the two-lane section, so it is continuing. We're recommending twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay, but it was done during COVID?
Yes.
Okay, when the traffic volumes are considerably different than they were and a mathematical assumption is not necessarily something that I would endorse, but.
Yeah, we're still on that segment recommending a twenty-five mile an hour.
Yeah, I understand what you're recommending. I'm not sure I'm going to agree on it. Let me ask a couple of other questions and then I will go to my council members. Was there any notification made to the Dana Hills residents about the proposal for a potential mitigation before this meeting?
No.
Okay, so they have no idea that one of our considerations, unless they read our agenda packet, that one of the considerations is to change the configuration of Mount Air Parkway in the four-lane section to a two-lane section, which is something, interestingly enough, we discussed actually sixteen years ago. And I remember that and I actually was able to find it as it was reported in the Clayton Pioneer. Couldn't find it in the minutes, but I found it in the Clayton Pioneer from sixteen years ago. And we declined to do that because of an overwhelming outcry from the residents at that time. I still think it's a potential good thing to do, but we have to let those residents know that that's a potential mitigation that we're considering.
If that is something that you want us to look into, then that is absolutely what we will do. I didn't want to, I wanted you to hear it first.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. But if we're going to consider potential mitigations for any of these things that would change what's the condition on the ground, those residents have to know about it ahead of time and they have to give them time to talk about it. And I would suggest that that discussion needs to happen before we actually change their speed limit. Realistically, you never change a speed limit back slower. It just never happens. Technically, could it? Sure, maybe, but it doesn't ever happen. Another question is the average lifespan for the radar feedback signs. I know we've got a couple of them up in, or at least one up in Oakhurst. As I recall, they have not lived very long.
Technology is improving and they are doing better than they did if you have older ones. But yes, they definitely have maintenance that needs to be done on a regular basis.
Okay, I'm going to go to my colleagues and ask for questions of the staff. And then we will go to the public. I do have one raised hand by a member of the public. I'm sure that that will fill in because Irina said she was going to. Right now I have Dan Hummer signed up to speak, so let's go to the council. And Tuya, I saw your hand first.
So I understand the need for the survey. I understand that we need to do that frequently. I get the, get the objective that, and I support the objective that we want to be able to enforce speed limits and be able to write tickets to people who are exceeding them and keep the safety down. I'm not happy about raising the speed limits on those four streets. So I have some questions about the survey itself and how it was conducted. And I, eventually, I want to find out if there's a way for us to redo that survey or if there's a need for us to do that survey. So I have a couple of very specific questions about the, just the survey methods. So it mentioned that the, I guess, the Mount Air Parkway was done in March, but the other segments were done on December tenth and December seventeenth. Both of those were Tuesdays. Is there a reason why we choose a Tuesday for the survey?
Usually you try to do them on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday as those are the most typical traffic pattern days. And we're trying to get very typical, typical traffic.
So why, so I, you know, some of the traffic surveys that I've read in the past are usually twenty-four hours a day for a contiguous four days. So this is only a segment of nine AM to four PM on one single day. I'm wondering why we wouldn't run it for more than one day?
So how the California manual on uniform traffic control devices says to do it is that it only needs to be a minimum of a hundred vehicles and it needs to be done at an off-peak period on a weekday so that that would be a time when it's not overly crowded, like in a commute time where you couldn't have pre-flow traffic, but it isn't, you know, the middle of the night where somebody may feel, oh, there's no kids or dogs out right now and go exceedingly fast. So they do say go off-peak time on a weekday, you know, during the daytime.
So then, so I would still think that you'd want to run it, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and do the average on these three days. But in terms of the time, and I get it, you want to do it, you know, obviously after nine and before four to avoid the peak PM and AM peak hours. But then when I'm looking at some of the, you know, the sheets in the end of the report that show the survey and for each of the segments, and it shows the start time and the end time, some of them have like location seven, the start time was seven oh four AM. The end time is not even listed. And so they're not consistently starting exactly at nine AM or ending at four PM. So I'm wondering how that skews the results.
Like, the MUTCD says you only have to do a minimum of a hundred vehicles. And we did substantially more than that because we used video to gain the data. So I believe our data is more accurate than if you only did a hundred vehicles, which you can do on a busy street in, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes and base your speed limits on that, where we did, you know, many hours of data. So I think our, our data is more accurate.
But even though if you exceed four PM, sorry, even if you go past four PM, aren't you going to the PMP hour and you would supposedly get more, more cars, maybe more speedier cars?
Yeah, when we looked at the data, if there were any groupings of speeds in a short time period where one slow vehicle influences multiple other vehicles because there, it was congested, all of that data would be thrown out because you are supposed to only use cars going in pre-flow conditions. So motorists are driving the speed that they want to drive, not the speed that they're being forced to drive by somebody else. So if we went above and below the timeframe, as long as we were using pre-flow conditions, you know, if we were in a commute area where the traffic was heavy, that's the stuff. That's why MUTCD says to do it that way because they don't want other motorists to influence the speed that you would go if you were just driving on that road by yourself.
Okay, and then Mount Air Parkway, so obviously that four-lane section is an uphill and/or downhill, depending on which direction you're going. And I would assume that people going downhill, leaving Dana Hills, the speeds are higher than those going up the hill. So how do you average and how do you figure out the speed for that?
We used all the speeds both directions when we did our speed survey. So yes, it kind of averages out. That would be one criteria, you know, along with the front-on housing and stuff like that, where you could use, say, you know, the grades to reduce it by that five miles an hour below the eighty-fifth percentile speed.
Did you notice in the data a big difference between the downhill speeds and the uphill speeds?
It wasn't separated out into uphill, into direction. We have videos. We can look at that if you were, if you're interested, but it's not included in the data that's being presented.
And then one last question. So on the March data that you gathered on Mount Air Parkway, were the results from the days you surveyed consistent with the results you got in December?
What happened is we only did the four-lane section in December. We didn't do the two-lane section. So the results are somewhat different because, you know, you stopped at the stop sign and now you're in a narrower street. So we had nothing to compare it to because we did not originally do that back in 2019.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think that concludes my questions. I'm definitely hoping to, you know, to find out if there's a, if there's a reason for us to redo any of the surveys on those four segments. If that might result in lower figures, I'm really hesitant about increasing the speed limits. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jeff? Did you raise your hand, right?
I have some questions that aren't really organized, so I'm just going to kind of go across the board here. One of the things, Chief Warren, that you mentioned pertained to volume of tickets. Do we have data around the tickets, the people who received those tickets and their residency? Not that you would have to produce it right now. I'm just curious if we maintain that to see. I'm curious to whether if, what proportion of the people exceeding the speed limit and that were eventually cited live in town.
I have copies of all the tickets that does. So somebody could.
I think I'm in alphabetical order now.
Well, I assume that that was available. I guess my question, I am curious as to the proportion, if that's something that you could take as an action item at a later time. You know, I'm not going to try and put you on the spot for that.
No, I mean, just as I, I can flip through it as we talk, just to, just to take a quick glance.
Sure. Okay, so my other question is about enforcement. So I believe that it was stated that if we do not adopt the eighty-fifth percentile, then radar is no longer able to be used for enforcement. Is, does that pertain to all speed limits? In other words, if the current speed limit is forty at a given section and the eighty-fifth percentile tells us forty-five is the more appropriate limit. If we do not adopt the higher limit, does that just affect the speeds between the current and the new? Or does it affect all? Like, if you're going fifty, that which exceeds the eighty-fifth percentile, could you then use radar?
No.
No.
No, if, if we don't have valid surveys on the street, on these streets, we can only enforce the maximum speed law. It's a different vehicle section. And for that particular, for Clayton Road, the maximum speed law would make it sixty-five miles an hour. So we could not cite anybody with radar going under sixty-five miles. They'd have to go sixty an hour or over.
What about basic speed law? Because I decided for basic speed law, unfortunately. And, you know, it was on a, it was much lower than sixty-five. It was inconquer, don't worry.
I'll take a stab at this and then I'm going to let Sergeant Shaw also speak to this. So basic speed law allows us to cite you or, you know, anybody that is going in unsafe speed for the conditions. So, you know, reality is the speed limit can be twenty-five on a street and you could be going twenty-five and you could be citing for going in unsafe speed based on the conditions, such as, you know, it's rainy, windy, yeah, dense fog, visibility is low. And I can go into court and articulate that you going twenty-five miles an hour on a street designated as twenty-five miles an hour was the conditions. So, you know, if we, if we go back to Clayton Road, for example, and, you know, I can't use radar now, but I see you zipping along and I get behind you and I pace you. And I pace you for a quarter of a mile going fifty-two miles an hour. I have to then articulate in court how that was unsafe. And so you take a clear sunny day with light traffic. We have well-maintained roads and, you know, you're in your, you know, Tesla that has collision avoidance and, and, you know, all sorts of other fancy bells and whistles. And I try and argue that your speed was unsafe and you, you know, counter-argue about these nice wide roads and clear visibility and no other traffic. And my car is, you know, well-maintained, I will most likely lose that. It is standard, it's accepted in court and we haven't been able to track down any case law on this, but, but fifteen miles over the speed limit is pretty much a presumptive unsafe speed. I win fifteen miles over the speed limit, no matter how much you argue, it was safe. Anything under fifteen miles an hour, you can make the argument that your speed was safe. And I'm going to let Jason pipe in here too and maybe add something I forgot.
Can you clarify that statement again? Fifteen miles an hour over the posted and speed limit? And then you said something about less than.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think Chief Warren said fifteen miles an hour over is presumptively unsafe for an ad for a speed, a posted limit that is supported by a traffic study. I think that's, that's how I'm interpreting that.
Fifteen hours over a speed limit based on unsafe speed?
So does that, is that posted limit, is that fifteen over? Does that fifteen, does that, the baseline there, is it required that it be supported by a traffic study?
Only on streets that require a traffic study. So like residential streets don't require a traffic study. They're automatically twenty-five miles an hour. So I can use radar on that street because it doesn't require a traffic survey. But if I write, you are going thirty-one miles an hour in a twenty-five residential, unless I can articulate why that was unsafe, I'll lose that in court.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that there are given conditions on Clayton Road that would be provided articulable fact patterns to support, you know, the detention. And that may exist at sometimes and not exist at others, depending on the flow of traffic, presence of pedestrians, other, other conditions of the road. I mean, I know that in the staff report, it indicates that sixty-five would be the only thing we can enforce. But I, I mean, I think that there are, isn't there are other factors that would come into play that we would be able to do if we so chose?
So if we have a situation on Clayton Road, somebody tailgating and weaving in and out of traffic, yeah, we can pull them over and articulate unsafe speed. But just somebody traveling at the normal flow of traffic. My officers have to have a legal reason to pull somebody over. So they have to be able to articulate legally what that car was, what, what traffic violation that car was committing before we can turn on the lights. So, you know, it, just as there is a Girl Scout troop walking down the street on the sidewalk, you know, that, that, that kind of thing isn't going to change our probable cause for pulling over a car that maybe visually we think is going a little fast? I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but.
Okay, yeah, I think you are. So if we're, if we're unable to use radar, could we use visual estimation of speed?
Only if the officer has been to radar school and they can, but it is difficult. And so what would happen is an officer sits on the side of the road. They see a car that they believe is going over the posted forty miles an hour, let's say, you know, in. they believe is going over the posted forty miles an hour, let's say, you know, in their minds, they, they estimate that car at sixty. By the time they pull out, catch up to the car and get behind it, that driver is most likely sees you and slows down. And it would be really difficult for us to go into court and articulate with full confidence that our visual estimate of sixty miles an hour was accurate.
Well, they're training, there's classes that are specifically designed to provide officers with this training, if my understanding is correct.
So officers go to a radar course, and in that course, they talk about visual estimation. But, you know, that, that's a skill, that's somebody that works traffic a lot. It's, it, that, it's just, it is not quite as straightforward and easy as it may appear to be able to do visual estimates.
Okay. Okay, shifting gears a little bit, how often can we reconduct a speed survey? Can we do it every week?
Yep. As much, as, as long as you're willing to pay for it.
So, second question is, how much does it cost?
I think, Lynn, you said, what, a thousand dollars a segment? I can't remember.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred a segment.
But in the past, PD has done it for us, correct?
The last speed surveys were done by Rick Ambasini's firm, and they have to be signed by a registered traffic or civil engineer.
Okay. I mean, it really does, as Mayor Pierce, as you said, it does seem like speeds can only be ratcheted up and not down. For school zones, what's the enforceability of the phrase "when children are present"?
Hey, Jason, can you...
That would have to be during the school crossing periods, when the children are actively coming from school. Just like out on Clayton Road near the middle school, when the signs go active, indicating it's an active school zone during those time periods, that would be when that prima facie speed limit of twenty-five would be enforced.
Can you clarify that visual estimate?
So for visual estimation, in the, the jury instructions that provides to traffic commissioners, it says that you cannot use visual estimation to circumvent the use of radar when there's no valid traffic survey.
Well, that's unfortunate. All right. I, I get, so in the, in the manual that, Lynn, that you had referenced, one of the phrases that it says is, I'm trying to pull it up here, it says, "The speed of traffic should not be altered by concentrated law enforcement or other means just prior to or while taking speed measurements." That "should" is doing a lot of work. It seems like a recommendation. What happens if you do?
There's a good chance your ticket will be thrown out of court, and they'll find that the speed survey is invalid, and that, from that point forward, you can't...
Then you could do it again the next week? You'd do another survey the following week?
Yes.
I mean, how, and how, what evidence would be, need to be presented to demonstrate that this "should" is not being adhered to?
That's maybe a legal question, so I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that.
Okay, and then the follow-up, the obvious follow-up question is, has this ever been litigated?
I know at one of the cities that I worked out, worked at prior to joining Harris, like my first day on the job, I was told, do all the speed surveys over again, because we're being threatened with a class action lawsuit by everybody that paid a traffic ticket when they received a ticket, and we did not have valid surveys on the road. So I got it done, so I'm not sure, you know, how that class action lawsuit would have turned out, had, had we not taken care of it. But, so there is chances that there is litigation involved.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's a lot of work going on here. When you say, when the manual, not you, you, not the, it was the royal you, you know, when the manual says "should," and then when it says "concentrated," you know, to me, that's something different than we normally do, concentrated rather than just regular. And so, you know, we have, we have a limited number of officers, and they will, they will enforce the speed as best they see, you know, in the discretion as best they see fit, you know. What's to say that when we redo a survey, they don't happen to be in that area enforcing the speeds a little bit more judiciously?
Well, it says you can't have them out there when you are doing the survey, absolutely, and that if you...
Well, it says you can't have it concentrated, right? But concentrated versus regular.
I think there's someplace else in the manual that says that, like, if you are using radar to take your, collect your data, you cannot be in a marked police car, you cannot, you need to be as incognito as possible, because you are trying to find out what speed most drivers are driving. So this is all, you know, I think stemming from back in the day when everybody had a really low speed survey, and the freeway turned into a local road in a podunk city, and everybody got a ticket. So they're trying to say, we want the speed limits to be that of what a reasonable person would go on the road, and if we do something that artificially brings that down, then normal citizens that drive responsibly are now subject to getting tickets, and that's what the speed trap law is trying to avoid.
Okay. And then, a little bit further down in the manual, it talks about criteria that you could, that should be considered when, if we are not gonna follow the eighty-fifth, and still hold a valid speed survey. One of them is, as you mentioned earlier, is houses fronting on the street. You know, I think they set a, a number of dwellings fronting within a certain distance. And so, on Clayton Road, I don't think we quite meet that criteria, because there's like eight or nine houses that front Clayton Road in a small area. So that, you know, increasing the speed to forty-five when someone's backing out of their driveway on Clayton Road is, I mean, that's, that's pretty crappy, if you ask me. You're gonna, you're asking for someone to get hit, but, but it doesn't quite meet the threshold that's listed in the manual. But Mountair does. Mountair has a number of homes fronting there. And so, do we have more leeway in that regard on that area, because we exceed this threshold of dwellings fronting?
So you take the eighty-fifth percentile speed and you round it. So it either, you know, if it's thirty-seven, you round it to thirty-five, if it's thirty-eight, you round it to forty. And technically, that's what you should be setting your speed limit at. If you have houses that are going to have people backing onto them, if you have steep grades, if you have, you know, all that other criteria, those are the criteria that you use to lower it by five miles per hour. We already lowered it by five miles an hour, and we're still saying it has to be increased by five miles an hour.
Is, is five the maximum you're able to lower? Like, if you have, like, a hundred houses that front on the road, five is the only thing you can do?
Yeah, it says, and this is the, you cannot take it down more than five miles an hour, period.
Okay.
Yes, and then I guess... We probably would have.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, if you're talking forty-five miles an hour on a person backing out on an area with a very low visibility, because it's lined with trees, and the road has various curvature, and, and what do you call it, elevation changes, that's a dangerous exit on that road.
Correct, and that, that would be a reason you could lower it by five miles an hour for the density of the housing, and then if it's truly dangerous, it probably would show in a higher collision rate than would be normally found.
I mean, in the collision rates on the rapport, I think Clayton Road was one of our highest streets in the city of collisions. And I don't, how does that compare? When we're, when the criteria is, the rate of collision is a factor, what is that comparison to? Is it just an absolute factor?
There's no set rate, you know, just from being a traffic engineer, I kind of have an idea of what are high rates and what are low rates, but they're, they don't give you a rate that says, you know, a low rate is below this, and a high rate is above this. And it may be done that way to give traffic engineers a little bit more leeway on taking that five mile an hour deduction, which we did, so...
Okay. Yeah, and then the last thing, it does, it does, it doesn't give any guidance on it, but it essentially says, you can consider pedestrian and bicycle safety, that probably factors in, in the same manner. I'm trying to look for where it indicates that five mile an hour is the only way you could ratchet it down. Could you kind of point me in the right direction?
Um, I actually...
That's my last question.
I actually quoted it in the staff report.
While you're looking for that, I did glance...
It's on page two, item one there.
Okay, yeah. So...
Up in the middle of the page, Jeff.
Yeah.
Are you looking at the staff report?
Yeah, page two.
Okay. All right, I was on the, I was on the traffic manual. Hold on.
Yeah, so this is, I think, a direct quote out of the traffic manual, two C thirteen. Yeah, I tried to put, you know, quotes where I could, because there's different documentations floating around there that don't quite quote things exactly as how they are in the manual, in the MUTCD and in the CBC, so it's like, I wanted you to have the real true accurate information.
Well, I guess, I'm looking at, I guess, on the traffic manual, on part two, page one hundred and thirty-seven, you probably know this, like, there's a footnote, number thirty-three, where it says, "The establishment of a speed limit of more than five miles an hour below the eighty-fifth percentile should be done with great care. As studies have shown, establishing a speed limit of less than eighty-five percentile results in increasing collision rates. In addition, this may make violators of a disproportionate number of the reasonable majority of drivers." So, the way I'm interpreting that is, if you're gonna do it, you should know, you should have all your stuff lined up, but it also contemplates lowering it more than five miles an hour.
I don't believe...
That's how I'm reading that.
That is to do the five miles an hour, not to go more than the five miles an hour.
Well, this is the establishment of a speed limit of more than five miles an hour below the eighty-fifth percentile.
Right, so we take the eighty-fifth percentile, and we do the rounding, and that's what the speed limit should be. If we did that on Clayton Road, the speed limit would be fifty.
And then we take the five?
And so we said, we're using all those criteria to lower it five miles an hour, and they're saying, but don't do that five miles an hour unless you've really thought about it.
Yeah, so it's allowable.
That five miles an hour is allowable, but no more than that five miles an hour.
Well, see, I guess, I guess we'll have to disagree to disagree, because I think that, and, yeah, the manual says, "A speed limit of more than five miles an hour below," so what you're saying you can't do, "should be done with great care." So am I, am I interpreting that incorrectly? I could be, because I'm a novice, so...
Okay, so in, I'm trying to, I have it up on my screen, too. When it says...
I'm on page one hundred and thirty-seven of the manual, towards the bottom, footnote thirty-seven.
It's also on page three here. The agenda is on fifty-one of one twenty-eight.
Okay. Yeah, you're right, at the top of page fifty-one of the agenda. That's, that's what I was reading. Sorry, I went right to the source.
Oh. I don't have the agenda, let me, I...
Okay.
Pull up the agenda.
I mean, obviously, it, it seems to recommend great caution, because of, you know, terrible But it, it looks like there's an opening, and I want to know how we can take it.
I don't think that you could take one and have your speed surveys hold up in court. Everything that I've read, everything that I know, is, it says, the five miles an hour is the maximum. Okay, so I am on page two of my report, and in section two, which is quoted directly from the MUTCD, it says, "For cases in which the nearest five mile per hour increment of the eighty-fifth percentile speed would require a rounding up, then the speed limit may be rounded down to the nearest five mile an hour increment below the eighty-fifth percentile speed, if no, if not, if not further reduction is used." So you either have to, that's saying they're taking the rounding down, and it's saying, once you round down, you can't take it any farther down than that. Or, excuse me, what you take them... So, this is in the...
In the staff report.
In the staff report.
But it says rounding up, not rounding down.
Excuse me. Yeah. The posted speed limit may be reduced by five miles an hour from the nearest five mile an hour increment of the eighty-fifth percentile speed in compliance with CBC, section six twenty-seven, blah, 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 see standard below for documentation requirements. So, that's saying you can round down if you follow those vehicle code sections, and those are the ones that say, density of housing, high collision rates, all those things, you may round it down. But if you have to round up, then you can take that five mile an hour deduction, but you can't take any more than that.
Can I just inter...
Please.
Sorry. You referenced Vehicle Code Section twenty-one, four hundred B, which I just pulled up, and without reading like every word of it, the last sentence says, "That the local authorities shall not reduce the speed limit any further for any reason," and it talks about the eighty-fifth percentile and the five miles per hour. So, so if you look at the vehicle code, it specifically says "shall not for any reason."
That's, that's unfortunate.
What, do you want to reduce the speed further?
If we could, we would have.
I think what Jeff is trying to get to is, how do we keep the speed limit from going up from the forty-five, and I think it's really clear. And there are a couple of other issues, and I know we have other council members that want to speak, and I'll get to you, but a couple of things we need to, to ask are thinking about gravel trucks that weigh a whole lot, going forty-five miles an hour on Clayton Road in traffic is more than a little bit of a scary thing. And I wanted to ask the question, has video surveying been done before?
I am not sure. That's not something that, you know, is something you can look up easily on the web. It does say in the vehicle code that you can use radar or other electronic devices to gather the speed. So the video is the electronic devices, and it also says the minimum of a hundred vehicles, where we did way more than that, so...
So where has the video surveying been done?
Pardon?
Where has the video surveying been done, besides here?
I, I don't know, because it's not something you can easily find.
But you have not used it before?
No. So I haven't done one of these in ten years, and that wasn't really an option back then.
Okay. All right. Who wants to go next? CWI, I saw your hand up.
Well, I'll just, you know, I had, I'm sorry, Jim, I'll be quick. You know, I had a couple of questions, and Jeff got to a lot of it. You know, the, the, you know, the methodology of this just drives me crazy, and I'm sure it's gonna drive the citizens crazy as well, in that you got eighty-five percent of the people who are doing the wrong thing, so therefore we have to acquiesce and change things for those people. Imagine if we did that for every law. But, but nevertheless, the last thing I want to do is tie our hands, or tie the hands of our police department to safely enforce this. But, just, just a quick question, if fifteen miles an hour is going to be the, the standard that we can start safely ticketing, I mean, we're getting up to sixty miles an hour on Clayton Road, in reality, with this, with this increase. And right now, according to this, eighty-five percent of the people are driving fifty-one miles an hour in a forty. Are we ticketing now? Are we ticketing the people that are going fifty-one miles an hour in a forty? Are we just leaving that to fifteen? Are we just leaving that to 15 miles an hour until they get to, you know, 55?
So we're gonna advertise that now, right, CW?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, it's too late now. I mean, it's too late.
Well, I believe it, it is fairly well-known, if you Google, you know, "How do I find a traffic ticket?", the 15 miles over the speed limit i- is a well-known factor, I don't think.
So in effect, we're, in effect, we're raising the speed limit on Clayton Road to 60 miles an hour?
Um, well, i- in simplistic terms, yeah. Yeah, I did, just on, in my, in my, just trying to pull some data to present, the average of all the traffic tickets we wrote in the data that I looked at, the average speed over is 18 miles an hour over the speed limit. That's the average of all the tickets that I looked at, how fast people are going. Some are right at the 15, and other, you know, a few, you know, tweak it way up high. But, a- and this is not unique to, you know, to Clayton, that this is, this is throughout California. 15 miles over the speed limit is typically what is upheld in court unless you can articulate otherwise why the speed was unsafe.
What does it, what does it cost to send an officer to, to a traffic court?
Um, that's, I think the minimum for court appearance on your day off is, is either three or four hours of overtime. Three or four? Four, four hours of overtime, so.
It was three, but he just made it four.
It's, it's in the MOU, I, I, you know.
Hey, Lynn, I just got a quick question for you about modular and the restriping there. Has there ever been a study of the way that that should be done? For instance, I've seen it where now there, the parking is in where the bike lane is now, instead of against the curb. Is there a safer way to do it?
Yeah, that was one option that we looked at. We will certainly look at all the options, and if you direct us to do so, discuss that with the citizens. I think if you put the bike lane adjacent to the curb, you have to have a physical barrier between the cars and the bikes, which sounds fine until you think about, now you don't have a way for a standard street sweeper to clean the street where the bikes are going, so you're gonna have to now buy new equipment to clean the bike lane, so it has some complications. I wanted to back up one comment a little bit, and kind of, I think the theory behind the speed trap law is to say, if you have a speed limit, if you had no speed limits on a street at all, you know, people aren't gonna go 80 miles an hour. They're gonna go what they feel is the safe speed, and it looks like what they're saying is 51 is what people think is the safe speed. So I think the, the thought is, and, you know, we're all drivers and maybe not following this exactly, but, you know, it's not like you obviously are gonna go 14 miles an hour over the speed limit, because most of the people are going 51. So it, it's kind of like, put the speed limit at a reasonable rate, and then you'll have more people complying with the law.
So we don't, well, I mean, you want to put a billboard up in Brentwood on the way in saying, "Welcome to Clayton, hit the gas."
Yeah, right.
And Jim, you probably remember back when you were in the force, I mean, Clayton had a reputation for being pretty.
We had two speed limits back then, 25 and 35, and we used to cite them five miles over. I will say this, that 15 mile an hour over is, is an interesting number, because after a while, the courts used to throw anything out that was 13 or less over the speed limit.
What happens, I mean, what happens if we write the ticket and we just don't defend it? But, well, I mean, you'll still have the visual presence, and you'll get some compliance. Is that an option?
Oh, yeah, you will get compliance, because people will have to go to court to get it adjudicated, and that alone is an inconvenience, even if the, even if the police officer does not show up to defend it.
Yeah, that was the class action lawsuit we were having in the other city.
I, I would say that I, I would not encourage my officers to write tickets that they're not gonna defend in court. That, that, that is problematic, and, and the courts would have issue with that. So.
Yeah, that does seem bad.
Yeah, we can pull people over and warn them.
Convenient just to get pulled over.
Right, exactly.
CWI, are you done with your questions?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, Jim?
Thank you. All, in all this discussion, I've lost. What is the current speed limit on Oakhurst? Because that's the one I get most impacted by. That is 45, correct?
No, it's 40 miles an hour, and we're proposing to keep it at 40 miles an hour.
On your side.
Keep it, you're proposing to keep it at 40 miles an hour?
Correct.
Okay, because I can tip. Go ahead.
There's no proposal to change the speed on Oakhurst.
Great, because I will tell you, from firsthand experience, returning from the city downtown, coming back to my residence, they are doing better than 60 miles an hour, because I have to get out of the way, and a couple of times I've paced them myself. All right, so you're not making any recommendation there. Now, back to one thing that I'm sort of interested in, and did you take into consideration when we had, for example, on Clayton Road, those numbers of traffic citations, any correlation on traffic collisions or accidents that happened at this, in that same timeframe? Because speed and obviously not stopping for a red light or, or a stop sign contributes to traffic accidents. So was there any correlation there?
You broke up a little bit, and I'm not 100% sure I understood the question. We did use, or we did calculate accidents or collisions per million vehicle miles on, as part of the report, but we didn't do it just during the period when we were taking the survey information.
Okay, a- and back to one of the things that Jeff pointed out, you can do a traffic survey if you want to spend $1,200 every other day, I guess, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that, and that's, that's just something. My other question is, we also have to certify our officers to be radar trained, and my question there is, and I don't recall, how often do they have to be recertified? In other words, they don't have to go every other week. How long is the certification for radar training good for?
Once they've attended the 24-hour course, they're certified for radar.
For life?
Yes.
They don't have to go back for retraining? Okay. And the other thing is, hopefully, we have adequate funds available to train any officer that is not currently certified.
Yes, but training right now is difficult because of COVID, and it, it's not so much funds. We do have training funds, but it's a staffing issue as well. You know, when we send somebody to a 24-hour class, we have to backfill. So there's challenges, but yes, that, that is part of every new officer's cycle of training, but not all of our officers have been able to attend the class yet.
Let me ask another question related to traffic management and control. Have you given any consideration to having a solely dedicated traffic officer? And i- if not, is there potentially grant money that? Because I thought we, we had grant money at one time for when the seatbelt requirement went into effect. We, we, we were able to get a grant to have an officer or two trained to be the seatbelt police, for lack of a better phrase.
There, there are no grant funds available that I'm aware of right now that would fund a full-time officer for traffic.
Traffic, okay.
That, that is something that, that if, you know, the council wants to explore, I'd be fully in support of. But, you know, with only two officers on per shift, I, I can't dedicate one of those officers to traffic, but they do spend a portion of their day working traffic, every officer does.
Yeah. And, and what was interesting, and the reason why I bring that up, at one time, when Clayton had a much smaller police force, we had one officer that was a, the traffic officer, and, and of course, things were different then. You only had, you know, 3,000, 4,000 people, and now you got 12,000 people, and I don't know how many drivers are constantly on the road, but I can see how that would be a, a challenge to have a solely dedicated traffic officer, so.
But back then, it was on horseback.
Yeah. Okay. You've answered the, how long, the certification, once they get through the 24 hours, and that at some point, we would be able to get all of our officers trained and certified in radar control. Okay. By the way, Lynn, one thing that we didn't, you didn't, you're looking for other electronic devices. I know on the freeways, the California Highway Patrol uses a laser gun of some sort that tracks speed more accurately than a radar gun.
Yeah, so LiDAR is what it's called, and it's, yeah, you shoot out a, like a laser beam, and how long it takes to get back to you. Which is kind of the same thing, but instead of like a sonar, it's.
Takes the wrinkles over your forehead, too, it's great.
Thank you very much.
Pretty common, yes.
Yeah, LiDAR is what a lot of the autonomous vehicles are using as well for navigation. That's right. Okay, any question to you? Go ahead.
I have one more follow-up question. So in, in the recommendations, and specifically the alternative actions, the alternative action number two would be to accept the survey report, but exclude the four locations where the recommendation is to increase, increase the speeds, and I presume that would be in order to resurvey those four streets, you know? So how, from a timing perspective, if we took that action, so that we can get the rest of the city in order, but, but resurvey the four locations, how quickly, you know, if the results then came back better, quote unquote, so we wouldn't have to increase the, the rate, how quickly could this be in front of us with the updated survey results?
I would estimate four to six weeks. This is also one where we're doing it during the COVID time, so if speeds are generally higher, I'm not sure we're gonna get better results.
Okay, we do.
It's that whole should, it's that whole should business.
Yeah. We do have one of our attendees who has raised their hand, so let's go to public comment on this item. I know Irina mentioned earlier that she wanted to speak on it as well. She hasn't raised her hand yet, but we will start with Dan Hammer, and I am asking you to unmute yourself, Dan. There you are. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the report, this is very interesting, actually. It's, it's very cool to see all this. But at the, at the beginning of the presentation, I thought it was stated that if there were no major changes to these roadways, an example given widening, we could just adopt the current speeds for, I think, another five years? And did I hear that right? And if, and if so, can we just adopt, adopt these current speed limits and then make the adjustments like proposed to slow the traffic down? Ie the, you know, the, the radar sign that kind of clocks you and shows you, you know, you're going, you know, you're going 50, like they, like the one over on Ignatio, and stuff like that. So, did I, did I hear that right? And then also, so can't our police staff still use radar and force traffic now? That's with speeds that are less than 15 miles over the speed limit? And I, I didn't catch in there if there was a timeline in there that, that that expired? So have we already reached that expiration date, or how long do we have until we get to that? Because my, my concern is, is as Mayor Pearson indicated, once, once you go up in speed, I don't think you're ever gonna get to go, go back down again. So if we increase the speed, then people are gonna go five to 10 miles over that speed limit, and all of a sudden, now your 85th percentile just slid up. I don't see on how we're gonna get that back down. I agreed with, also with Councilmember Calano, idea of doing longer surveys to gain more data points. And, but obviously, I'm, I'm gonna agree with Chief Horn, because, you know, she wants to keep the streets safe, so as possible. But I'm not in favor of increasing the, the speeds on any of the streets that were noted. So, so back to my question, did I hear that wrong at the beginning? That can't we just adopt what we currently have and have that in effect?
Dan, you, if you want to finish your statement, then we'll bring it back to staff.
Okay, I am, I'm done, thank you.
Answer all those questions.
So I'll, I'll start. The speed surveys, the last time they were done was 10 years ago, so we're out of extensions. And we have already passed the expiration, so we, we don't have any wiggle room there.
So no, we cannot continue to use the current speeds unless we find and have them hold up in court, unless we do another survey and find a different result.
Correct.
Or take mitigating actions in the meantime and then do another survey. That means that during that interim time, the police department cannot write tickets that will be held up in court, should they be challenged. I might ask the chief and maybe Sergeant Shaw, how many tickets are actually challenged?
So I, I want to, I, I, I want to just back up just, just a little bit, just to correct maybe the statement. It, it's not that we can write tickets and then just not, just not have them held up in court. We lose our legal ability to pull you over. So we, we, we will now then have to revert to the maximum speed law. So we will have no legal reason to pull you over unless you're going over 65, or we can articulate unsafe speed. So, so those would be the only two ways to pull you over. If, if you're going fast, I have to be able to articulate that your speed is unsafe for the conditions, or you're going over 66 miles an hour.
Okay, so follow-up question. Can you still use pacing?
Yes, but, but pacing.
I understand, you have to catch up to them and they slow down and all that stuff.
Yes, we can use pacing.
Pacing or the speed estimation, which is also super hard.
But as Sergeant Shaw clarified, I had forgotten that you, you need to have the traffic survey. But again, if, if I'm going to use pacing, I, I still have to be able to articulate either 15 over the speed limit and/or unsafe speed. So. And I, I think you had another question in there, I just don't remember what it was.
Oh, you got it. You got it. So we have some choices tonight. I think all.
There's some more speakers.
Oh, somebody else raised their hand. Yes, Devera, you raise your hand, you are now unmuted. No, you weren't. Okay, there you are, Dee.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I live in Dana Hills, and I exit my cul-de-sac on Mount Whitney, which is at the bottom end of Montero, and I can attest that I've seen speeders coming out of there. So, A, I wanted to thank you all for asking great questions, and I was disappointed that I didn't get any kind of notification that this was even going on. And if I wasn't a, a participant in, you know, reading what's going on in city council, I would not even know about this. So that was a really good question. And I just wondered, what about stop signs? If you're gonna implement, first of all, I can't remember, did you up the, the, the speed from 40 to 45 on Montero? Or was it from 35 to 40? I can't remember what you said.
From 35 to 45.
So it went up?
Yes.
Okay, 45 miles an hour?
No.
35.
5.
35.
Okay, so went from 30 to 35. Isn't it possible, because coming down off that hill, that they do accrue more speed coming down? I've witnessed it, and, and also, there's kind of a little bit of a blind spot coming out of Mount Whit, Mount Whitney from that part, where if there's cars parked, people coming flying down that hill presents a concern for me. So I'm just wondering, is it possible, this is kind of a little trickery here, but maybe add a stop sign? We have one stop sign somewhere in the middle of Montero, around the pool and Cabana. Would it be beneficial to add another stop sign? I know it probably would maybe make some residents not too happy, but it would also be a deterrent to, you know, travel faster than 35, like y'all, you know, we all have done it. We've all gone five miles to 10 miles over speed limit. You know, would that discourage that if we put a stop sign, if that was even possible? That's all I had to ask, thank you.
I don't see any other speakers. I don't see any other speakers right now. But to answer Dee's question, I think we have certain warrants we have to meet to place a stop sign. We can't just go stick one out wherever we want one. So I'm going to go to Irina and let her speak, and then I will ask staff to answer those questions. And Irina, I have unmuted you. Where'd you go? Okay, we'll try this again. Okay.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what court anybody went, but when I exceeded on Pine Hollow Road by four miles, I lost. I exceeded on Clayton Road by five miles, I lost. So I wish I knew where that court you're talking about, because it is true that I had two speeding tickets, and both of them I've lost in court. And the only reason I didn't have those tickets is because the judge was recalled eventually. But yes, at four miles an hour, I was driving 35, 39, or 35, I got a speeding ticket and I lost. And on Pine Hollow Road, and I think on Clayton Road, it was five miles an hour over. So I guess, not every police department, I mean, it was a Concord Police Department, not every police department is following it. And I am really concerned about increasing that speed, speed limits, because right, it's right now, people are flying at 555. It is absolutely, because I'm driving, I say, I'm driving 50 miles an hour, and I see people leaving me in the dust. So yeah, it is not even 10 miles. And I don't see anything but the empty cars on the way. I understand that we have very limited, you know, resources in our police department. But without this enforcement, we might have the collision, you know, increased significantly. I understand the survey. I understand the numbers. But reality is reality. It's not on paper. And people are not driving within four, five miles an hour. And it's just almost 15 miles. So that's all I got to say. And it just, maybe there is something we can do. Some other things we can do. I understand that radar is something that is everywhere. But if you look on Ignatia Valley Road, there is a radar sign that says you're going too fast. Do you think anybody paid any attention whatsoever, unless there is a cop out there and we know it's sitting out there? No, not really. So I, it's just, I don't understand, how do we enforce it if there is no way to have a cop, there is only an empty car, and at the same time, people are flying, people are flying through Clayton like nobody's business. I know that the Strenahan, that road, the Marsh Creek Road, is not going to be changed. But still, other places, it's 60 miles an hour, that's what people are driving. That's it.
Thank you, Irina. I don't see any other hands raised by our attendees. So I'm going to close the public comment on this and bring it back to the council to figure out what we want to do. I will say, I tend to agree with Tuya's comment about, you know, one day with very limited time. I'm a bit concerned about that. But I'm also concerned that in COVID conditions with lighter than usual traffic, we might get even higher numbers. And that is a concern. So what's the pleasure of the council? I am concerned, too, about the video, the use of the video recording for the speed. I'd like to know a whole lot more about the reliability of that, where it's been used successfully before. I'm not real excited about being a guinea pig for new technology.
If one of the surveys showed like 400 vehicles, and as Lynn mentioned, the minimum is 100 vehicles, can we pick and choose if we surveyed 400 vehicles and say, well, let's do the best fit for the lower number?
I don't think.
I mean, I'm fine with gaming the crap out of this, so, you know.
I don't think we can just pick and choose. I know if you did a radar, you are supposed to take out the cars that are influenced by other cars. And we did do that on, with the video data points.
That seems like there's an element of judgment there.
Yes, and that's why you're supposed to be a licensed traffic engineer to find the report.
So how many of those cars that you took out as being slower, were slow because they were following a gravel truck?
I, we could find that out from the video, but I don't have that information right now.
Realistically, on Clayton Road, the gravel trucks slowed traffic down. That's actually a good thing. But the idea of a gravel truck going 45 miles an hour on Clayton Road is not very comforting.
Agreed.
Scott, did you want to say something? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Lynn. She's the traffic engineer. And I would trust her judgment more than mine, actually, because I'm not a TE and.
Okay, thank you.
How comfortable would we be in taking other measures? I mean, how comfortable would like the council be in taking other measures to influence, influence the speed, both passive measures in education, which are good, and I think totally kosher, and active measures in persuasion by like a show of a presence?
You're talking about with the increase in speed or?
No, I mean, you know, we can try and educate people. That's one thing. Hey, we're going to do a traffic survey. It's going to happen this day, and please slow the crap down. That's one. The other is, while we're doing the traffic survey, we make sure that that's when our rotation hits for when we patrol those areas.
Unfortunately, neither one of those are allowed by the rules.
Yeah, right.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking about the level of comfort, because, you know, I mean, the language is not super precise. And I think, you know, if there is room, we should take it. So I'm wondering what the comfort level is.
But Jeff, so if we decide tonight that, for example, we take option two, we accept the results for everything but those four sections, and we make a decision tonight that we're going to resurvey those four sections, and I think Lynn, you said that it will take about four to six weeks for us to have the results. Was that, can you break that down even further in terms of it would take you some time to do the measurement, some time to type up your report? So I think you can give us a timeframe?
And can we do it with radar instead of with the video camera and see if we get a difference?
And can we do it in a, in a, in a post-COVID world? I mean, we don't know how the traffic is going to be.
What's that?
But, you know, I mean, right now, and I think Lynn said it before, that during COVID, people are driving faster anyway, so that we may not get the result that we're looking for. Do we have to do this in a certain timeline at this point? Or do we have some?
The surveys expire, the surveys expired right now.
It's already expired. But what does that mean for us?
So for every day it's expired, there's another day that we can't use radar to enforce.
Right. But do we just raise the speed limit anyway? And just because we're, you know, we're taking our time with this? We can't kick the can down the road, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, you could. It's just a choice, right? It's just a choice you make.
Well, realistically, if we raise the speed limit on Clayton Road to 45 miles an hour, and we're not likely to tick it until people are going 60 miles an hour, then the unsafe speed takes effect anyway, right?
And what does?
Is it 55 or 65? I forget.
65, 66 would be where you tick it, right? So, you know, you have to get to 61, and you're going to start ticketing.
Well, Irina must have really terrible luck, is what I'm saying.
But realistically, how much difference is there in the speeds that we're going to be allowing on Clayton Road in order to tick it?
Five miles an hour.
Five miles.
I wouldn't be comfortable raising the limit. I think we need to do more diligence around the study. And I'm willing to encourage us to keep doing studies until we get a good result and then pick that one.
Yeah, but what about giving the police the ability to do their job and help keep the streets safe? We have to do something.
We have that.
I mean, the delta, we're talking at five miles an hour essentially. And they have the ability, if someone is doing like, if they're just pure speeding, then maybe not. But if they're doing like an unsafe lane change. Or they're on their phone. I don't think, are you allowed to pull someone over for being on the phone now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, if they're doing other activity that would otherwise warrant and justify a custodial stop like that, then we should do it. And if we don't, then we should follow the law and only do things that are allowed to be enforced.
And it's only five miles an hour difference, Jim. If we raise it to 45, they're not going to stop anybody under 60.
Right, I know.
And.
Well, I'm 63, so I'm exempt.
65. You know, I mean.
You don't look a day over 80.
I'm really worried about this creeping up constantly. And I'm also concerned about the technology that we've not used before, and we don't even know who's used it before, and how effective and accurate it is. I think maybe we need to bring this back to our next meeting and talk about what measures we might want to put in place. Do we want to put a flashing speed sign on Clayton Road to remind people to slow down? I think it does make a bit of a difference. I mean, I do disagree with Irina. I think when you see that flashing sign on Ignatia Valley Road, it reminds you that the speed limit is what it is. And you tend to slow down. Not everybody does, but.
I will say, I will say the majority, because I go over to Walnut Creek on a regular basis, and I've seen that light flash. I have, I can't, I probably count on two fingers how many people slow down.
Well, then you've never been behind me.
I have been.
So in terms of today's action, though, don't we want to at least partially accept the survey results so that all streets other than those four can get, you know, our police can enforce the traffic?
I think that's a prudent way to go.
I could support that.
But.
Yeah, I mean, we have to break up, we have to break up the action item, right? The action item lists two things for some reason. Under one item, we want to separate them.
Yeah, Councilmember want, yeah, you would not take action on the second item, because if.
Well, we kind of want, we want to partially do it.
No, we adopt the resolution, but not.
Not the muni code, not the first reading, because we would not be making changes to the municipal code.
I see. Yeah, okay.
So we have a resident to accept the traffic survey, although I'm questioning even that. But, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to accept the traffic survey. I want to accept it like with exceptions.
But how do you do that?
So you can modify that motion on, right now, you would say, accept the traffic survey with the exception of, and say the four streets.
The four streets, yeah.
Yeah, sections that you're not accepting.
And then go into the resolution. Can I add, action is to adopt the resolution?
Correctly, I mean, Mala amended.
Exactly, as Fran just indicated, with the exception of those four streets.
Also, please include the update of the Oakhurst one, so we don't raise the speed limit on that one, because what's in the report says 45. So we want that one to be 40.
Yes, I would support that.
And any ancillary changes that might be found, too. I mean, if there's little touchups, bring it back, we'd like to be able to just make them and publish it if we did find something.
So what do we want to do about the four streets? Can we, do we want to resurvey those and get a really tight timeline, detailed timeline from Lynn as to what the process looks like?
It's almost like three streets, because Clayton Road is just one continuous stretch, right? You broke it up, but it's really does all of Clayton Road now is trying to be like faster. I mean, I'd also like to, like to be creative on ways that we could like legitimately slow traffic down on a 24-hour basis. Like, and I don't know, like, maybe, maybe there's some creativity that we could engage in to do that. But, you know, I, that's why my initial question to Chief was regarding the residency of the people being cited, because I, you know, I suspect, and I don't have evidence for this, that's why it's a suspicion only, that a number of, some significant portion of those that are causing the 85th percentile to increase is because we're using, Clayton is being used as a throughway from East County.
Absolutely.
So, so I want to like, not do that.
So I don't know. You are correct. I did look through the tickets. I'd say 25% are Clayton residents, and probably 75% are not.
See, so that sucks, right? So we can tell our residents everything we want, and the non-residents will be like, not as responsive. So, you know, the education will only go so far in that circumstance. And really, what you need is active measures.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not talking about putting up Chavalla Freeze, where we have barricades going around. But, you know, I like the triangular barricades. But something that makes us less of an, gives less incentive to use Clayton as a throughway. And I entertain, I'll entertain all ideas. I have some, but I don't know how, how well Mala will like them.
So we're asking staff to get creative, and think about what we can do to slow the through traffic down, so that our Clayton residents are safe.
Yeah, maybe the timing of the light, the timing of the lights is a nice tool.
There may be, there may be a way we can get another light somewhere along the way. I know these are things we talk about down the road, but down the road.
So should we then plan to adopt the resolution, accepting the report with all the changes that have got to be made to make it accurate? And then ask staff to come back with some suggestions to try to accomplish what we're asking for?
Yeah, but in accepting the report, we are excluding, you know, the four or three locations.
Exactly.
And can we notice the residents? Yeah, that sounds fine. Can we notice the residents of Montero, who will be the most impacted by potential changes? Like, it sounds great. It sounds great, but if we do that, and they're like, hey, I don't, that's terrible, I'd be, I'd be interested in knowing what the view is over there.
Well, 16 years ago, that's exactly what they said. So I think we need to notify the whole Dana Hills homeowners association and ask them to do an e-blast. And we certainly ought to do a notification to the folks who live in that section of Montero Parkway, for sure. But we.
Yeah, that would be good.
Now.
Absolutely. That's, that's the only way to do that.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I mean, I wouldn't even consider changing it without letting them know what's happening.
So where are we?
We're, we're proposing to adopt the resolution, exempting those streets and the recommendation on Oakhurst, because that doesn't need to be changed. And and allowing for, I would say, non-substantive, but corrections to fact in the, in the report.
Yeah. If nobody object, I will move that.
Hopefully, that's clear enough.
Okay, motion by Diaz, was that a second?
And Mayor.
And Mayor, or Mayor and Councilmember Diaz, let me just clarify that part of that motion is you're directing staff to come back with a plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, precisely.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the plan, the plan should have multiple components. The first, the, you know, one of the components is future studies and logistics and plan for that. The second part is, well, I don't know if it's a plan, but it's an ask, really, of other ways that we could reduce traffic flow to, or reduce speeds, sorry. And then, I guess there's also the Dana Hills notification component. And then there's also the education component. It's a four-part, four-pronged plan.
Right. And if indeed we don't have a meeting on September third, this would come back at the second meeting in September, which should give everybody plenty of time to figure this out.
September first, right, not the third.
Oh, you're right.
Did that a go or no?
We haven't decided yet. We don't have anything urgent on that agenda yet, unless we lose power tonight and have to bump everything else to that meeting. So the plan at this point is to, is to not hold that meeting. So it would mean our next meeting would be mid-September, the fifteenth.
So you bring this back at that meeting, which is, would be our first meeting in September, our old meeting.
And I realize that's a month for the PD to cope, but as we discussed earlier, it's on those four streets, it's not making a huge difference in the speed.
Well, I encourage, I encourage the use of the basic speed law.
And just keep ticketing anyway.
And I would say that if we can bring it back on the first September meeting, that would be awesome. I'd rather get to this sooner rather than later, if possible.
So you'd prefer to hold a meeting for this item?
If our staff.
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, I concur.
Okay, so for September first, we could have a proposed plan for you on timelines and how this would play out in the future. But we, I just don't want to overpromise and under-deliver that we would have every creative strategy, strategy on speed mitigation and all the outreach efforts, but to give you an exact timeline that you could review and accept on the four components that you've asked for.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I'd like more data on the video survey and, and a little more background on that, because I, I haven't seen this used before, and we don't have any citations of where it's been used before. And this is a first for us, so I'm.
I mean, statistics will tell you, yeah, statistics will tell you, you do enough surveys, you're going to get just regular variance. And so if you do enough, you're going to get, at some point, you're going to get lower variance.
The question is whether the video survey is.
Yeah.
As reliable.
Yeah, it's viable, yeah.
Yeah. So.
So.
Okay, so have we outlined it? And does staff understand the direction that we'll go with this adoption and all the conditions? Council gets it? Okay. Jim moved it. I think I heard Jeff seconded. Is that right?
It was Carl, but okay.
I see CW did.
CW seconded?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
It's my job.
So.
I heard you in the background, CW.
Yeah, I heard them both at the same time, so, okay. So Janet, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Mayor Kair. Councilwoman Kamalano?
Hi.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Hi.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the consideration of a letter of support for using the Plan Bay Area 2050 baseline data methodology as the basis for the RINA allocations. And we have a staff report from Matthew.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The item before you is to consider a letter of support in, to A-Bag to use the Bay Area 2050 Plan as their baseline for their methodology to disperse the housing allocations. And it is recommended that the council review the draft letter and have the mayor sign it on behalf of the council and forward it to A-Bag as soon as possible. It is, in the staff report, it discusses the two options that are primarily before the Methodology Committee. It's the 2019 household baseline or the Bay Area Plan 2050 baseline. There's a chart in, in your staff report, which shows the differences between the two. It comes down to this, the 2019 household baseline, you're looking at six hundred plus housing units. If we, if the, I'm sorry, the plan, the Bay Plan 2050 is used, then you're looking at about two hundred units. That is a significant difference. If we end up with the six hundred count, that is unfeasible for, for our city. We will never be able to achieve that kind of numbers without significant compromise to our community. The two hundred count is more manageable. We can achieve some of those numbers, hopefully all the numbers, but at least show that we're making significant progress in that. So it is important that A-Bag, in their Methodology Committee, that they understand that, that the city of Clayton does not support the 2019 baseline, household baseline, sorry. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I also would like to point out that there is no fiscal impact with this letter. However, there would be potential fiscal impact should the 2019 baseline household be, be the methodology used. I'd be happy to answer any question you may have.
And I'll go to questions in just a second. I do want to add a couple of comments to what Matthew said. As I said in my earlier report, we had another Housing Methodology Committee meeting a four-hour marathon a week ago. And there were a couple of modifications made. Staff came in with four other options for baselines. And it was virtually unanimously decided by the group that they wanted to throw out the 2050 baseline as it was proposed at the previous meeting. But they did adopt a different modified Plan Bay Area 2050 baseline, which makes the numbers go up slightly from where we were in the original one. I would advocate we continue to ask for the former plan, even though it's not really in consideration at this point, because it gets our point across that we're trying to achieve better greenhouse gas targets, fewer vehicle miles traveled, that kind of thing, and put the housing closer where the jobs realistically are going to go. There will be undoubtedly factors added on to these baseline numbers that will increase whatever number is in that baseline. But there is a dramatic difference between the 2019 base and the Plan Bay Area 2050 base. And so staying with the Plan Bay Area 2050 as a base literally makes our numbers about a quarter of what they would be with the 2019 base. I will tell you that the Housing Methodology Committee, there again, almost unanimously voted down the 2019 as a base, which was rather shocking to me, because some of the advocates were really outspoken about it. But we were able to knock that one out based on the arguments that we really need to put the houses where the jobs are, if at all possible. So the South Bay is very nervous about a very high housing number. But that's where the jobs are, and they want even more of the jobs. They're, they're looking for forty percent of the jobs in the future, so. They want forty percent of the jobs, they shouldn't have forty percent of the housing, that's my feeling, so. Anyway, Tia?
But I, I want to just add something. You know, I think the one thing that's missing from the staff report is providing a little bit of credit in terms of why this is in front of us to begin with. You know, the staff report mentioned that after the August sixth Mayor's Conference, you know, upon discussion, it was decided to send the letter. But, you know, anyone who attended the August sixth Mayor's Conference knows that while the program included, you know, other helpful content and reports on RINA process and this methodologies in general, it was Mayor Julie Pierce who lit a fire under every Contra Costa City to get them to write a letter to A-Bag. So I, you know, this letter is, you know, I know it's coming from several cities, similar letter, but it's absolutely the type of example, the type of advocacy that our city can, should, and has been doing to allocate for more reasonable, which means lower figure. You know, the reality also is that I know that there's some stories on social media that, you know, to tell otherwise, but I don't know anybody in current or past city leadership who would have advocated for more high-density housing in Clayton. But I think here's the difference. Rather than talk years after things have happened, this letter and all of the advocacy that our mayor has been done at A-Bag to get our small city perspective heard is exactly what we should continue to do. I get it why South Bay understandably would have advocated for the 2019 baseline, because it results in lower numbers for them. But for Clayton, those numbers would be disastrous. You know, getting six hundred fifty to eight hundred and ten unit allocations for the next cycle, I have no idea how we would accomplish that. So the Plan 2050 approach or any variation of that, I get it why all of the cities, probably all the cities, if not most of the Contra Costa cities are advocating that, because the result for Clayton is some, something two hundred-plus units, and which is much more reasonable. So it's a huge difference. It's exactly why this kind of advocacy is important for Clayton, so that we voice our opinions regionally. But it's really important that we do it at a time and place when it actually matters, not years down the road when the RINA methodology has already been decided and we have a figure. But right now, when it's being decided, which will directly impact what number we get. So I just want to give a little credit why this is in front of us and a little bit of appreciation that it is in front of us.
Thanks, Tia. Other comments?
How, what's your take on the likelihood of something close to this going through? Just curious, I mean, you have your experience there, so you probably have a decent read.
I expect that the number will actually be closer to three or four hundred rather than the two twenty or so. By the time we layer on the other factors, that's the way it's happened in the past. On the other hand, I am hearing from our colleagues in Alameda County, in Solano County, and Solano has projected to have a huge increase percentage-wise. But they don't have a whole lot of housing units to begin with. So it's numbers versus percentage, and, and, you know, numbers can be small and percentage can be high. But there are others, Napa County certainly is very concerned, and they do better with the Plan Bay Area 2050 numbers. So we have a coalition of folks who have worked together on the advocacy for, say, the Regional Measure Three, the toll increase, that managed to put together a coalition and go in and advocate for what our counties needed. And we were able to turn the tide on that. We were able to increase the percentage of return to our county on the revenue from that by over sixteen percent over what we had had before. That was a, it was not up to what we needed it to be, but it was a whole lot better than we were allocated to be. So I think, I think this is a start, and, and we need to keep fighting. And that's why I'm saying, even though the Plan Bay Area 2050 numbers at the baseline that was there before is not still on the table technically, we still need to send that message. Because I actually have hope that we can get this before A-Bag for consideration. And I think the A-Bag elected officials may have a different take than the Housing Methodology Committee. Because frankly, we're all elected officials. We're not stakeholders and advocates and some of the other representatives that are helping to drive the numbers higher for everyone. There are a certain number, and I'm, I'm going to be very undiplomatic here, of some of the stakeholders who literally want to punish the higher-income cities on the fringes of the Bay Area for not producing more housing.
And that's. Not what? Say that again.
For not producing enough housing. Because they think we've got good schools, we've got high incomes, we've got resources, that they want to stick it to us, basically. And I was on a conference call today with Arinda and Danville, talking about this very thing. We're going to make another pitch at the Mayor's Conference on the, on the third. That's where the third was coming from, Jim. And so we're going to make another pitch for letters there to talk about this. And we're lining up a speakers lineup to go to the A-Bag meeting to represent Contra Costa County in the public comment. We're also working collaboratively with many of our colleagues around the Bay Area to impress upon them what the ramifications of these recommendations are, so that we can hopefully get a majority of the A-Bag Board to go with a more favorable methodology for us.
Who's trying to stick it to us or all the, all the outer rim places that haven't produced?
Yeah, a lot of the higher resource areas, as they're termed, the ones, the places that are higher income, they've got better schools, things like that. They really want us to have to pay for our lack of building housing. Now, we can't control how much housing gets built. We don't build it. All we do is zone for it. But there are others who recognize that we cannot meet our greenhouse gas targets that we're required to meet by state law in Plan Bay Area 2050 if we put all the houses out in the fringe areas. I mean, if we pile the houses in Clayton and Brentwood and Antioch and Danville, where we don't have real resources for transit, then we're not helping our greenhouse gas targets that we're required to meet by SB three seventy-five. We can't do it. It's going to be a stretch to do it, doing everything we can. And that's why Plan Bay Area 2050 puts close to forty percent of the housing in the South Bay where the houses, where the jobs already are, and spreads the other sixty percent around the rest of the Bay Area.
I mean, it seems like a, yeah, it seems like a, like a, like a no-brainer, right? If you're, if the goal is for environmental stuff, it seems like a no-brainer. So I'm wondering, like, who is, other than those that are vested in the South Bay who may not want it, you know, what are the forces that are opposed to that effort?
There are equity advocates who believe very strongly, and I understand where they're coming from, that we should build far more affordable housing out in the areas where we have good schools in order to allow equal access to good education and opportunity for better education to qualify them for better jobs. What, part of our conversation today was maybe we need to put more of the resources for education in those areas that don't have it now to help them, lift them up, and help them qualify for some of those better jobs. Maybe we need to, to think about the social engineering in a different way.
So this is the high-opportunity areas that is included, the language that's included in a lot of legislation? That's like the, what you were talking about, the jobs and education? Not jobs, sorry, education income, my bad.
And, and frankly, it, it really ought to require first and foremost access to transit. Because a lot of folks. Because a lot of folks who are lower income cannot afford to commute. And yet their commutes are hours and hours every day. And that's not really lifting them up. If we can locate a lot of those folks nearer transit, they would do better. Now, not all of the jobs that they have, you can use transit, we get that. Um, it's hard to take a lawnmower on a bike or on BART to do those kinds of jobs, but there are there are other ways to provide the education to the areas that need it to be able to help prepare them for better jobs that are not just service industry jobs. It's a tough conversation to have because it makes us look like we're saying, no, not in my backyard. And that's really not the case. We're still going to get a high number of uh, low income units assigned to us.
Bottom line is, our backyard isn't that big.
Well, the question is, do we want the number that we get out of Plan Bay Area as a base? Or do we want spreading it like peanut butter that 2019 does? And which is going to be quadruple that number. I mean, neither one is a good scenario for us, but one is a whole lot worse. So I think the least we can do is send a, a strong letter advocating for the original twenty nine, uh, Plan Bay Area 2050 base. And I'll do everything I can to try to convince my colleagues around the Bay Area that we need to go back to that.
I don't, I don't know what the downside, I don't see a downside to that.
Go get them, Julie.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
You want a motion or you want to take public comment first?
I gotta take public comment first.
Have anybody left in the audience? I see Dan Hammer has raised his hand and I'm going to unmute you. There you go, Dan. You should be unmuted. Dan? Oops, you muted yourself again. There you go. Dan, can you speak? I show you is unmuted.
How about now?
There, that worked.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I had to switch my, my cordless headset was dying on me, so I had to switch to a corded one.
I understand.
My apologies on that. So, um, first of all, Mayor Pierce, thank you very much for advocating this. I, I'm, I'm very happy to see the, the numbers way down, mainly we, you know, we're basically ninety-eight percent built out, you know, where, where's, where's this going? So I just wanted to say thank you for that, that's, this is great. Um, as a, you know, somebody that doesn't want us to have all these high raises and stuff like that around here, this looks to be a lot better plan. And, um, the, I had a question in regards to all of this, all this building that's, that, that people are trying to advocate for and, you know, get, get these larger numbers and things like that. I don't, you know, there, there's a large reservoir, um, ma, you know, massive California reservoir project and, and, you know, that doesn't look like it might actually get as big as it's supposed to, but there's really no reservoir is being built. So everybody's asking for these, you know, more housing, the more housing, the more housing. But I don't think we actually have the infrastructure for it. We're already going, we're in PG&E, we're already having the rolling blackouts again. Um, and, and, and we're, you know, we go through droughts here. Um, it's odd, we just had rain the other day, but it wasn't anything to mention realistically except for, you know, maybe just dampen things so we're not as, you know, as a higher, higher danger, but, but, you know, we just, I don't think we have the water resources here and, 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 or the power. So I'm just kind of curious that when you have these mayor, um, you know, meetings and things like that, are, is, does this come up at all as far as, you know, just the basic resources to make sure that's being provided for all of this? You know, so, um, this growth that people are trying to push down everybody's throat? And then, and that's all for my questions, but thanks again.
Thanks, Dan. To answer that question, I don't see other hands raised, but I'll answer that while I wait to see if anybody else comes up. Um, I can answer that, yes, that comes up all the time. Our water agencies tell us consistently that we have more than fifty years worth of growth capacity in our water supply system. Some of us question that, but they are the authorities and the California Water Authority tells the same thing. Um, energy is certainly a push right now, um, but, you know, they tell us they can provide most of the time. Yeah, it's, it's a problem, but the state assigns these numbers and by state law, we've got to figure out a way to zone for the number of units that we are assigned. We do not have to build them because we're not in the home building business. So that's up to the private market. But we do have to provide space in town for them. So, um, the lower the number, the better our chances of being able to meet that. One of the successes we had this year, and I'll get to you in a second, Irina. One of the successes we had this past year was in some of the legislation that was proposed. It was proposed that the new round of RINA numbers would be added to the unmet numbers from the last round. We managed to beat that one back. And so this is new, start from zero at this time instead of having the remainder of our one forty-one from the last round. So a small victory, but at least it was won and we, we succeeded on a few things, but, and we're beating down a lot of the legislation that is, was attempted this year. So, um, we just keep tilting at windmills. Okay, Irina, I'm allowing you to talk. Are you, I think you're unmuted. There you go.
Uh, yes, I just came back from upstate New York and it's an enormous amount of New Yorkers who just bought homes there and just moved out because of COVID. It, the, the bizarreness of this legislation is not taking COVID at all. It's going nowhere, absolutely nowhere. The more density we have, the more disease we have. And I work for the healthcare organization that is very aware of it. And it's just to me, the most ridiculous thing is people trying to get away from the multi-density. From the, from, in New York, there is nothing but multi-density except maybe for Queens. Um, but they are buying homes that are in the dying towns of upstate New Yorks that we have been visiting for twenty-five years. And they look like the houses there are fifty thousand dollars considered to be a good price. As of today, they selling those homes for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, which nobody ever in upstate would, would have thought about. But COVID put a combustion on all of this. So what our legislature is to take talking about is, oh, let's have more COVID than less. Uh, there is no amount of wearing masks and everything can substitute for mu- multi-density. It's, it's just, it is what it is. You cannot help it. Multi-density breeds this disease, it does. And we don't even think about it for five minutes. I, I just, I understand sometimes when I look at our legislator and I hear them speak, I think they're, some of them just simply illiterate, but at least they have no scientific bone in their bodies. I, I don't understand, six, how is Clayton possibly can manage even two hundred? Forget the six hundred, I, I just don't understand where. It is going to be on top of our roofs? I mean, where is it supposed to be built? Please tell me, uh, that we're trying to beat it back as much as we can because this is madness. As far as epidemic is concerned, this pandemic is bred in the multi-density. It's exist. We already have eighty-five percent decrease in ridership on BART. People don't want to ride BART because it is a breeding ground. People don't want to ride buses. We just heard from County Connection that ridership is in a total freefall. What are we, what are we thinking? I, I, I'm just appalled that we're thinking about so bizarrely. And plus the developers, developers aren't interested, they're not interested at all. You can, you can read, I read Wall Street Journal, nobody's interested in building anything right now because economic situation, thirty-three million people out of war. I, I, I'm not seeing what, what these people are talking about, it's, it's just, they're, it's lunacy. Then leaving in the parallel universe, I, I, I don't understand. I, I was in the airport, the San Francisco airport, I was the only person there. Can you imagine? Twenty TSA agent at me, just me, one person, in the whole airport, boarding the plane. I, I, I don't understand what people are thinking, I just don't. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Dee Vera, you have three minutes. Dee? Can you unmute? There you go.
I am, am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, this is just a quick question, um, since you're on the topic of A-BAG and Rena. Um, the city-owned properties, I don't know if you own multiple or if you only own the one downtown, uh, where, where does that fit in to the RINA? Um, and could that, could your properties, could the city-owned properties ever be targeted for high density down the road uh, meeting these RINA numbers? I, I don't know, is that an appropriate question for this topic? Um, or is that something I should ask somewhere else? But I was just curious if, if, you know, city-owned properties would ever be a target for high-density housing to meet the needs of Rena? That was all I have.
Thank you, Dee. Um, and the answer to that question is yes, they could be. So, um, it will be up to a future council when they put together the next housing element to figure out where to zone for the, um, required number, whatever that becomes. Okay, so I see no other, um, public speakers, so we will close public comment and await your direction on the letter.
I'll move to approve the letter.
Second.
And the second came from?
Your, your humble servant.
Right, I had a first by Tuya and a second by Jim. Uh, Janet, would you please call a roll?
Absolutely, Mayor Pierce. Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is limited to council requests and directives for future meetings. Tuya?
So I wanted to just get, um, a little bit of a status update from staff on some of the options, uh, on the downtown plan, the town center specific plan revision. So I know that we as a council have discussed that on and off, and I know we included the update to the town center specific plan as one of our annual goals, but I know we haven't moved forward on it yet. I know it takes a lot of money to do that. But I would love to have us just an agendized item where we could at least understand the options, understand the fiscal impacts. And Fran, to give you a little bit of background, so, you know, historically, I think the city has always looked or envisioned having more retail in the downtown plan because of the positive revenue impact it has to the city. But I think we also all realize that retail has changed, even in downtown San Francisco, retail has permanently changed. So I don't know that that's realistic anymore. So we've talked a little bit about taking another look at the town center specific plan and specifically doing it, um, sort of as a community-based workshop charrette format. But that takes money, probably takes hundred thousand, maybe two hundred thousand dollars. So I would just love to have a little bit of an update from staff in terms of what are the options if we did some kind of charrette, community workshop type uh, program where we gathered feedback and started evaluating some of the options? And so what does it take essentially? What could be the timing? What could be the costs? So that we can start thinking about, is that something we can accomplish and get started this year? Is it next year? Is it three years from now? I don't know, but, um, if we could have a little bit of an update and have a little bit of discussion where that's going.
Okay, what's your timeline on that, Councilmember Catalano?
When you have availability, I know you have a lot of things on your plate.
Okay. Okay, any other items for future agendas? Jim?
Did you recognize me?
I did.
Ah, my goodness, thank you. Uh, this one is a sensitive matter. Uh, I've been getting calls from constituents, citizens and so forth. And it's related to COVID nineteen. First of all, the, I want to compliment the county if they're listening uh, on the improved data that they have put out relative to COVID nineteen. And it's more definitive and it has a lot of, it's answered a lot of the questions that people have asked me. However, the one thing that's of concern of the people that have called me, for a long time, Clayton only had five identified cases of COVID nineteen. As of this morning, forty. So that's, that's number one. What's the, what's the escalation of that? Fortunately, we have been very blessed that we've only had one fatality or one death related to that, uh, condition. Concord, on the other hand, has had like fifteen hundred identified cases and forty, uh, deceased individuals. Surprisingly, Richmond had twenty-three hundred plus cases and only nineteen deceased. I guess the question ultimately, we need to somehow get the county to provide us, and it's, it's got to do with contact, contact tracing. And I suspect more testing is, uh, what, uh, what is driving these numbers up. But, and I also recognize the sensitivity of HIPAA rules and regulations, but that czar medical director down there in the county who seems to report to nobody uh, has all those answers, I believe. And I don't know how we extract that from that person. Should we be advising our, our residents? Be cautious when you go to the market, be cautious when you go to the bank, be cautious when you go to the dining outside, be cautious when you go to the gas station? Can't answer that question. I would like to have some definitive information, and I talked with the interim city manager about that today. I would like to have some more definitive facts sometime in the near future. Public safety.
Okay. Any other items for future agendas?
I, I have a couple. Um, and this is not, not nearly the same weight, but now that we're pretty much have been doing the Zoom meetings for a long time, I, I think someone mentioned this at the beginning, you have to register to sign in, it's kind of a longer process, it takes a little bit of time. Um, and I think right before the meeting, there's a way to enter the meeting without actually registering online. Like, can we publish that from the get-go instead of asking people to register? I know that we can't require people to register as a matter of law, or we can't require people to identify themselves, but by forcing them to register, I think we're doing that. And so for folks who want to join more easily with like a one-click thing to make it easier to access, I would prefer, I think it would be good if we published that link for folks in the meeting agenda when we sent it out. If that's something that we can do, I would, I would make that request. I don't, I've never set up a Zoom meeting, so I'm assuming that there's a way to do that, but I don't, I don't know.
If I may, I know that I've just participated in two, uh, uh, civic meetings did not require registration. They just sent me the link and I popped in and I was there.
Yeah, and you could put in the name if you want, but you don't, you shouldn't have to.
Is the benefit of the registration that we actually know who the participants are? So that when we call our speakers, we can actually, you can actually say, Dan, please?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they could, that, yeah, I think they would be, they'd be able to still put in their name if they want to. But I don't think that we can require them to, as a, like, many cases, they, we, we, we allow and we're required to allow anonymous um, commentary, so, um, I don't think that we should put that barrier in front of people. And I think most people will still put some kind of identifier, they could just pick whatever handle they want. Hopefully, nothing too weird, but you know. Um, anyway, so that's one. Uh, the second is, you know, I know that we've had the Regency Parking, um, pilot program for some time now. I'd like to put that on the agenda to finalize. Like, I, I'd like to end the pilot and Like, I, I'd like to end the pilot and make it permanent. So if we could get that on there sooner rather than later, um, I, I, I think the residents would appreciate that. I know that a number of them are, you know, they're loving the program and they, um, they want to know what can be done to make it permanent. And, you know, we can, we can say that we'll wait until, for whatever reason. But at some point, you know, we've been in this lockdown for like 400 years now. Um, and it, it'd be nice to get some, some semblance of permanence, uh, for those residents. I think that would, that would help them out. Um, one less thing to be uncertain about. So that, that'd be, I think we can put that on the agenda pretty quickly, have a, have a discussion. It doesn't really change anything, like there's no cost or anything like that, so it's already there. So I, I, I'm hoping that we can get that done, um, while all the people here who heard the matter originally, um, are here, able to hear it, so.
If I can, Vice Mayor, this is Laura Hoffmeister. I, the chief zoomed off, but I recall her saying that was planned to come back to you early October, mid-October, so it would be before the council made any changes. That you guys established a definitive timeframe in your direction for it to be the pilot program. Um, so we'll have to check and see if we have the flexibility to move it up without a formal action by the council to bring back an agenda item asking for the pilot program to be ended sooner.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, if it, if it comes back naturally, that's fine. But we could always change the timeline if, if we all collectively agree, so.
You sure? But I think your tendency.
So anyways, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, okay, we got it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other items for future agendas? Seeing no one. Um, the public comment period was closed some time ago. Uh, I do have somebody with her hand raised. What's the pleasure of the council? Take the comment.
Let's take all, let's take all comers.
Okay, Scott Collier. Okay, you there?
Yeah, uh, this is, uh, Scott Collier. I just wanted to say that regarding with public comment, you have to consider the platform you guys are using for whether or not it, it kind of allows. So if you guys are using Zoom, there may be security concerns with, uh, allowing registration of certain users or passcode or other things. So the platform you're using may dictate the registration of the users trying to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so we are, um, at the end of our regular items on our agenda. So at this time, we will go into closed session. Let's take five minutes, um, and then we will exit. The council members will all leave this meeting. And we will attend another meeting hosted by the city attorney in closed session. We will come back to this meeting after that discussion to report out. So we are going into closed session now for a conference with our labor negotiator under government code section 54957.6. And the agency-designated labor negotiator is the interim city manager. The subject of that negotiation is the employee organization, the miscellaneous city employees, the undesignedated group. So we are now going to transition over to our closed session. Again, we will come back here to the public meeting to report out. So we'll see you in five minutes in closed session, council members.
You're taking about a five-minute break essentially.
You're taking effectively a five-minute break. Look out, we're back. It's time to wake up.
We are here, we were just waiting, so.
Very good.
Turn it back on.
Okay, you are now recording, okay.
Thank you. Um, I am coming back to report out of closed session, um, that we had with our labor negotiator and we took no reportable action. So with that, we are adjourned to our next scheduled meeting on September 1st. Thank you all, and we will see you later.
Thank you.
Have a goodie.
You too.
Good night.